Good morning, everyone. We will start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You should put a little flag on your jacket.
All right. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda? Anybody else have any? All right, so we've talked about this before. Do we want to approve the agenda if we have no changes? Or do we want to just do what we've always done before and approve the agenda if we have no changes?
Say, let's just keep doing what we're doing.
Motion to approve the agenda.
All right. Motion by Barry, second by Erica. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right, motion carries. All right, minutes from last meeting, March 4th. Do we have any corrections to the minutes?
On page four, where it says, well, page two of three, I should say. Where it says relocate bonding money for 2023 for the Heartland Trail, looking at modifications. I wonder if it should say, looking at modification, like reword it so that it makes it sound like relocate bonding money from 2023 for the Heartland Trail. So maybe saying, looking at modifications to reallocate bonding money? And then number two, same page. That except for a change in funding will be reviewed by the board. Maybe say, except if there is a change in funding, will be reviewed by the board? Yeah. That was all I had.
Does anybody else have any corrections or?
I just had a question, and I don't, I can't recall. Under planning and zoning on the last page, with the approved for the cannabis operation, did we, we didn't add anything?
I, I had the same question.
Like, any recommendation?
Yeah.
Well, all, all we, no, but we did say that we approved it the way it currently is, but we did, we revisit, if we revisit the, change the ordinance, then it will.
He would have to.
For the setback?
Yeah, for the setback, yeah, yeah. That's.
So it's just like him, it was just them having to follow whatever the current zoning is when they.
I think maybe we state that, though, because the zoning ordinance, I mean, Phil and I had a meeting yesterday to, that, where the recommendation will be to lower those setbacks from the property line.
Yep.
And I think we said, I mean, I think this case is hinged upon that change. So I think, and we referenced that, that we'll be addressing this. So I think maybe concur with planning and zoning and, and any new setback. I mean, I don't know if it was, it was implied for sure, because we said, you know, this will change. So I don't, we don't necessarily need him to come back. If, if we change, if we lessen that setback, we don't need him to come back and say, well, my, I showed you, it was 500 feet, I can't get 500 feet, I showed 300, can I do the 300 feet?
Well, I think he could get the 500, he just preferred not to.
If you did 500.
I believe what he said, he could, he said that he could do, it's just the.
I don't think you could do everything within, because if you take 500 feet off from your 40, I think Scott, Scott Wall said, what do you have, two and a half acres left?
Oh.
I mean, it's, it does minimum shrink that to almost nothing.
Yeah.
But we did, I think our intent was to allow him to follow the, the current at his construction time setbacks.
So are we going to change that in a timely manner then, that?
I think, I think the way Kyle said he can't get it on the next board meeting, it will be on the first day. Because it's got to go to the zoning committee and then come, come here. So it will, and we had a lot of questions. Now, the manufact, I'm getting into reports, but I'll say that later, I guess. But I think we should say, concur with planning, zoning and following the current setback and, and allow the current setback, the, how do you word that? The setbacks that, upon construction, that are required upon construction or something.
Yeah.
So then when we change, if we change them, then it'll be, when we change them, it'll, it'll be, it'll be, they'll be able to do that.
Just maybe say, current, current setbacks upon, during construction.
Okay.
Something like.
Yeah.
Just so it's clear.
Backs at construction? Or during construction? Could we?
At construction time.
At construction time, there you go, yeah.
Yep. So he doesn't, I mean, so it's clear that we do acknowledge that he can build under the new, new standards, not what was that, that is, so that would, that was the only thing I saw.
Do we have any further corrections or additions to the minutes? All right, with that being said, we'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Erica, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Barry, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
Denise, I think any of those dates would work for me on that. Sorry, I was down in Florida at the time, and I just remembered.
All right, move on to the consent agenda. Is there anything in the consent agenda that anybody would like to pull?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Just as far as the process, like, if I just, I don't want to pull anything, I just have a few questions.
Then just pull it, then just pull it.
Item seven and eight.
Seven and eight. All right, we will move those to the end of the county administrator report. Any other? Any other, anything, am I trying to say, would anybody else like to remove, pull anything from the consent agenda?
I don't need it pulled, but, you know, it, that contract for the, the civil rights assurance agreement, I mean, some of those are so complicated, I mean, it'd be nice just to, just tell us what, I mean, give us a little bit of an update on it, and we can do that, we don't need to pull it, but maybe when you have Denise's up there, we could just explain it to us a little bit.
Yeah. It was pretty complicated, it was lengthy.
So otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda up one through six.
All right, we have motion by Barry, second by Phil. Do we have any further discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Right, motion carries. All right, commissioners, open forum. Do we have anybody on the open forum? Who's name can I screw up today? All right, Barry Shoder. When you come up, please state your, when you set the mic in, then please state your name and address.
Yes, sir, my name is Barry Shoder, 948 West Lake Drive, Detroit Lakes, Minnesota, 56501.
Yep, yep, go ahead, yep.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here this morning, especially like your opening ceremonies, acknowledging the flag and the country. I'm here to propose, make a proposal. The proposal submitted on behalf of a group of like-minded citizens who believe that acknowledging God in our governmental deliberations is not only reasonable and prudent, but indispensable to wise leadership. This proposal is being submitted simultaneously to the three elected governing bodies in our community, the Becker County Commissioners, the Detroit Lakes City Council, and Detroit Lakes School Board. It's inspired by the longstanding precedent of the legislative bodies at both national and state levels. Every session of the United States Senate and House of Representatives, as well as their counterparts at the state level, is open in prayer. This practice has been in place since the 1800s. Each of these bodies has a designated chaplain who serves for two years. The incumbents have represented various denominations, all have been Christians. Most recently, the President of the United States has also introduced the practice of opening his cabinet meetings in prayer. It's a great comfort to the voting public to know that their elected servants are looking to God for direction in their decision-making responsibilities. And my last point is, I'm hoping that I will receive your favorable action and approval of this proposal. And I would gladly volunteer to make myself available to each of the governing bodies to assist in selecting from a cross-section of Detroit Lakes Churches those who would welcome the opportunity to pray at the opening of each session. I appreciate every one of you for your willingness to serve in a selected capacity, and you sometimes face decisions that might need a little help from beyond your own natural abilities. And so I'm suggesting that we allow for God to be involved actively in each of your deliberations. Any questions?
Thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, we'll move on to reports and correspondence. Who would like to go first?
Well, Phil and I had ordinance committee meeting yesterday. We, the only, the only topic was the setbacks, or the cannabis ordinance and the setbacks. And I, and we, I think we, I think this board all agreed that our setbacks on cultivation was too extreme. So we did, we came to terms with that one fairly easy, that maybe, you know, and that 100-foot setback from the property line was more appropriate. Again, these numbers were, you know, kind of, it's like, what do you, you know, we don't know. We, there's so much we don't know about the cannabis state regulations. We did want, as far as retail, we wanted a lot more clarification, and I, and I talked to Sheriff Glander a little bit after the meeting, too. I think there's a lot of cannabis products being sold out there without, without, you know, maybe our approval, and I don't know if they need board approval. Some of those cannabis things, it says in statute that they need county board approval. So if there's, if there's stuff selling out there that, and we don't know if there's a limit that, you know, some places can sell.
Do you mean like the drinks and the gummies?
Yeah, infused drinks. So is there a limit that's like a 3-2 beer where someone can, you know, so they can sell if it doesn't go up? But if it's the, and then we started talking about the, you know, the places that are going to be applying, what are they called, the dis- dispensaries? I mean, and they are, I thi, and I haven't been in, up at the tribal one, up at the old JL Beers, but I think it's, I mean, you have to give your driver's license, that you have to, you have to be, I mean, it's not like you just walk into a, you know, dime store and purchase anything. So I mean, those are like, those are more secure than a liquor store. So should they have a, I mean, should that, should there setbacks, is there a need for a big setback on those? Because they are, I mean, you're not having that. So I mean, there's a lot more questions about that type of building compared to a bar that sell, you know, that's a restaurant that will sell it. I mean, there's, I think, there's a lot of questions that we need answered. But I think the committee said, if it's a one-stop shop that only sells those and it's ID, and I think that, that's viewed differently. I mean, the setbacks could be like a liquor store almost.
Is there a setback for liquor stores?
But, you know, for a.
Can there be one like next, I mean, is there like a by churches, schools?
Well, that, currently there is, we have that. But if it's a, if it's like a liquor, I think, I think we're too extreme on that, when our currently, because the liquor store, you know, if you have a liquor store out in Cormant or, or some of those, you start saying 1,000 feet from, from a playground or something, I mean, that, I mean, if it's a building that's, that you can't enter unless you're 21, I, I think there's less of a risk than a gas, or a restaurant selling it, you know. I mean, there's, there's just different, you know, there's different sales that have different, you know, if it's locked behind locked doors is different than if it's hanging from a candy vending, you know, it's like, they're different. So we have some questions on that, but we, we recognize that those setbacks are cumbersome even in that, but if it's, you know, depending upon how it's sold. So still looking for guidance from the state, but I don't think there's anything coming fast there, so. And we're getting them before us now, so, so we have a lot of que, we have more questions than answers on some of it. So hopefully in the next weeks, we're going to have to fine tune this. But like I said, it's, it's going to be easier in the future to go, to reduce our setbacks than increase them. So if we're a little bit too conservative to start with, it's better than being too, I don't know, too lenient right early, so. Anything to add to that one, Phil? That it, there was a lot of discussion, but a lot of unknown.
We were in there for an hour and a half, and this, 45 minutes of that discussion was, well, we think, well, what if? Well, we don't have guidance from the state, so I'm, I'm just backing off on all of this stuff until we have more guidance. I know guys laugh at me for that, but you know what, this is a big deal.
I don't laugh at you because you have the concerns, I laugh, but, but we, we have to, we're the decision makers. We have to make the decision, we don't have a choice. So I, I agree, we're in a, we're in a tough spot, because we don't have all the answers that we have.
You know what, one, one thing that did come up yesterday that I hadn't heard before, you know, with the liquor licenses, they always have to come out to the townships to revamp their liquor. Well, that's, that's a grassroots level where, you know, if you, if there's a problem, at that point, you could, at the townships anyway, you can say, hey, we got a problem, you guys are parking all over our ditches and stuff. We, we don't want to grant that, we, we have some concerns. Now, we never had the concern in Lakeview Township when I was on the board there, but that would be a good way to see if there are problems. There's ways to settle things down or fix some problems. I just, I just think, once this is out, it just proliferates, and we don't know what is going to happen.
That, that I think would have to change at the state level, because at, right now, they don't require that. And I don't know that we can require it, because with cannabis, they've made it very clear that we can't be, we can be, we can't be stricter.
Here's our cannabis guidance.
Mm-hmm.
Not much in there, 25 pages.
I also had a Minnesota Rural County Zoom meeting, just, just updating, you know, kind of what legislations are doing, and they're, they're really pushing, to push out some of the programs for human services. And I think they really said that, like the acronym, African-American, yeah. Minnesota African-American Poverty.
Family Preservation Childwell.
Family Preservation.
Disprofessionals.
That, what they're really pushing for is to get the software updated at all the, at the state level, you know, that, for the counties to be able to utilize this. So I mean, I think, I think the message that even the MRC and AMC is sending, that we recognize that Minnesota has a problem here, and I think that's why it was a bipartisan issue to move forward. But you, we need, we need the, we need the mechanics to implement it, first of all, the, the software and the new programming. And then we need financial help to get it started. One thing that they're pushing, well, one suggestion by a commissioner was to, you know, right now they're doing a pilot program in Ramsey and Hennepin. Well, that's a whole lot different than, than rural Minnesota. So they're saying, start a pilot project from rural, for rural counties, because, you know, we can't just, I mean, you don't know the problems that are going to exist for rural counties by Ramsey and Hennepin's example, so.
Yep.
That was one of the big things. Representative Schultz was there talking about, you know, what was going on, what he was doing. One of the things that's kind of up for, that the DNR is doing, and I think it was passed, that they're going to be doing a public waters inventory, and that's a, and I think I've said that numerous times here before. That's a five-year program, so they only take certain county, you know, they only do a percentage of counties every year. That's, that's significant for rural Minnesota, when they, that waters list, and there's an appeal process. I'm sure that if your ditch is on that, you are restricted a lot more. So in my opinion, if they, they relist, they want to put a ditch on there or a waterway, and it's through your property, you are, you are, it's a taking from your property rights when that happens, and there should be compensation, but I don't know if there's any, anything that's going to happen on that. But anyway, be, be very aware of when that comes to Becker County, and we're going to have to, owners are going to have to be involved in that. He also talked about the new fraud prevention and trying to reduce government spending and funding, of course. I think that was, there was, there was just a lot of talk about, about what's going on at the state, of course. Then Dave and I had sheriffs, a sheriff's meeting. We had some really, really good news. So you remember when we were hiring, when, when the Sheriff Glander proposed that additional deputy, it was based on, we anticipated new fund, or additional funding from the state for housing prisoners? That did come through and increased from $72 a day to $96. So that was, that, that will hopefully fill that, fill that funding where we had planned on it. And then the transport deputy per day, on which they're paying back to the county, increased from $31 to $45 an hour. So that will, you know, and that's part of the reason why we got the big jump, is we're going to do some local transporting. Again, we don't, I think Sheriff Glander said, that's, that's, still probably won't cover all the expense on that, but it, it offsets when you say those prisoners, you know, the big bump in those. We also, we look forward, or we approved the moving forward with the seasonal boat and water staff, and that will not have to come back to board then, so you don't have to bring that part to board. You have an agenda for some things later on for the life savings, so that'll be on, is that on the agenda today, next week?
It'll be April 1st.
Okay. We also, also discussed a grant project for school mapping, and I think Dave, Dave has a better handle on that, I'll let him talk about it, but.
Yeah, so the, the grant program for school mapping, so what the state has done is they've allocated $7 million to, for the schools to be mapped, which means that they'll digitize their, their buildings and their, their grounds, so that one, and then it'll be in the, in the, in the, for no other reason, the 911 system, basically. I don't remember what the name of that is. Anyway, so then when someone calls in, they can, they can literally find exactly where the, it is at, but they can go the room number, the, wherever it is, and they can just bring up the digital map and find them, or if they're out on the ground somewhere. And they want, they would like this to happen to all the schools in the state. So unfortunately, the, wait, sometimes the way the state works, they don't think ahead a little bit, so they've just kind of done this and not had a plan. So, so right now, we're kind of, we're not really under the gun, but we need to get our data to, like, our data in our county of how many schools want to participate in this, and that's basically all we need to do. So then, once we have that, then we can send that in, then it needs to be done by the end of the month, so that we can approve it as a Northwest Communications Board. And then, that's actually where I got it originally from, was the Northwest Communications Board. But once we approve that, then it can go to, then we can send that data in, and then this is how many schools we have. Because the, basically the grant process is going to open up in the next 30 days, probably. And in order for us to have justification of how much money we want to apply for, we need to have the, the data to show how many schools that are going to participate in this, this process. And we, we, right now in Becker County, we currently have a lot of our schools mapped out.
I got a, I got a question. So I think the mapping on this part is more for cell phone usage, right? It's not the hard line usage, like, we have issues here that, but that was, that's figured out through your hard line and, and to your, so when 911 calls come through here sometimes, it just says courthouse, doesn't specifically say if it's a hard line.
Yeah.
But this is more for cell phone usage.
Well, it can, it doesn't necessarily, yeah, the, the cell phone would find it too, but actually what it's for, is for the dispatcher to, to open up this, like, the, hey, we're calling from here, this is where the cell phone is, boom, I open up my, my program and it shows the map of where they're at, and then they can pinpoint exactly what room they're in, or where they're at on the grounds, or, does that make sense?
Right, but it's not hard line, it's cell phone.
You can still call from a hard line.
So the, so the cell phone, where the cell phone is will like go into the map to show exactly where in the school the cell phone is coming from?
From what I understand, it's more for dispatching to direct law enforcement.
To that spot, yeah. But the cell phone might show, might give them an idea of where they could, they're like GPS location, boom, and maybe we can connect that. They should be able to connect it to the mapping of the, of the school. Though I, it, it would be good to map other facilities, too, but I think that they're starting with the schools and.
Is, is the cell phone, I mean, if I call from this building, I mean, with all the granite and the concrete, is it, is it, can you needle, get that, find that?
Well, my understanding from one meeting we had at one of our AMC district meetings was the issue is, our 911 is not always capable for cell phones. Once we can get that upgraded, that will be easier. But that was where the Verizon surcharge would be nice if that was went for, right? Do I know what I'm talking about?
Sometimes we get a cell phone call, and it just gives an approximate location, like, so many meters from X power, or whatever. So hopefully that's going to get better.
Yeah.
Do you have any?
No, I just, I just, it's one of those things, I'm not sure if it's going to work, like, you know, I just question that, if it's going to work, because the state is contracting it out, and how are they going to coordinate it to the 911 systems all locally? And, and I think they're, they're looking at that, but I don't have a lot of faith in the state getting a product that's good to us.
And so what, so what they've done then, is just go back to the, in the Northwest Regional Emergency Board, they've, they've instructed the regions to figure out how they want to do this. So our region has decided we want to collect the data. And then Hennepin County has offered to write the grant for all the regions and get the consultant, or not the consulting, but the company, to hire the company to, to do that. Which, we could, we could, we could do that as a Northwest Regional Board, or we could do it on our own. And, and if we do it with the assistance of Hennepin County, we still have, we still have the control for ourselves in our region, but then it would be easier for us to get our schools mapped by the same company, and then by the, and to go through the same process. And yes, the state should have probably done that before they did this, but they didn't, so that's where we're at.
Mr. Chair, if I may, with this, I think, too, with the cell phone, and you can correct me if I'm mistaken, Sheriff, but really, the idea is if the person calls in on a cell phone or a landline, they're able to say, I'm in the library, I'm in the first grade room, I'm in Mrs. So-and-so's office, so then they can pull it up on the map and then send people.
I think that's a big part of it, yeah. We'll see how it works.
That map, if you're going to go by names of, of teachers, you're going to have to update that at least annually.
I'm just using that as an example.
Yeah.
But you know what I'm saying, those rubs change every year, so.
Yeah, they could.
Grades change.
Yep. Yep, I, no, I, I saw all that, too, when we were talking about it. Do you have anything else, Commissioner Nelson? Who, who would like to go next?
I can go next. I don't have a whole lot. I had our opioid advisory committee, where we approved the RFP recommendations for this, this time, which are on the agenda, so we can talk about that later. Human services, most things are on the agenda. We did have a good conversation about what we're going to be looking at quarter, at least quarterly for budgets and staffing. And then I had senior counsel, just a couple things I wanted to make note of, that there are a couple. On April 10th, there is Jennifer Olson, who's the Minnesota Homeland Security and Emergency Management. It's in support of Dancing Sky. They're having a free virtual event just on disasters, don't wait, be prepared in advance. And then there's a senior nutrition program webinar on next Tuesday, which is also offered by Dancing Sky in, for, it's regarding the senior nutrition program. And then the one that I think is important is for people of all ages. It's Wednesday, May 21st. It's, they're called the file, and it's really about making sure you have a record of your financial information, investments and insurance, legal documents, and estate management. legal documents and estate management, just for planning in the event of an emergency or death. So, and that one is held here at the home center. And they're all free of charge, so that was all I had.
I had a, does the state have a emergency response, disaster emergency response team? Sheriff Blander, do you know, does the state have a team that they send out for big emergencies? I mean, every county is preparing, like, last meeting, we sent someone to Dallas where we're, to get training. Shouldn't there be a state team that kinda can come in and help with all these? Wouldn't that make more sense in every county having to plan for a World War III?
I don't know. I think we can do better than the state, just like you said a few minutes ago, though.
But I mean, it's, some of those, some of those trainings, I mean, were so specialized. I mean, the odds, the hopefully, hopefully, the odds of each county ever having to, ever having to deal with them are slim. So if a state had that expertise rather than each county, it certainly.
They let Minneapolis burn for three days, man. I don't know. I think we can do a better job.
This is a disaster after the fact, planning.
I know it, but I'm still, I think you're right about the other thing, but I think that we do, and I, I agree that it'd be nice if they did something. But I think we can do a better job, but I don't know. I think our sheriff can do a better job.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree with that, but I mean, some of these specialty, you know, how, how do you, I mean, there's so many things to consider.
Well, that's, that's true.
It's so detailed. There should be, it's, I mean, if, if something really significant happened, it's so complex. I, I would think the state would have a group that, that would go to the, the spots and say, you know, this is, you would think that there would be a, a leadership from the state or at least a partnership, but.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Do you, do you have anything else here?
Nope, that was all I had.
Commissioner?
Mr. Chair. So on, on the fifth, I went out to Osage. I toured our Ponsford and our Osage highway facilities, looking at our, all of our properties in the county. Also toured the Osage, the recycle facility out there. Good tour, a lot I didn't know. Steve Scoog took me out there. Came back to our, our household hazardous waste building back here on North Highway fifty-nine and took a tour of that and the property out there again.
Is that named the Sandy Gunderson Building?
Should be.
Should be.
And then also looked at some tax forfeiture property and talked with Scoog about, you know, what the process is for that. So that was, that was interesting. I didn't know that. On the tenth, we had a strategic planning Zoom with that Ryan Seelock, Carrie and I did. Just coming up with some potential strategic planning plans. No results back on that yet, hopefully by next meeting. On the eleventh, we had a RAC meeting, recreational advisory committee. We talked about Dunlop's. We're gonna talk about that here in, in one of those consent agenda items. On the fourteenth, I had my Prairie Lakes over in Purham, the incinerator. Went out afterwards and toured the ash facility. We applied for some grants to get to reusing that ash. I went out to the site and what I saw was not nearly what I had envisioned in my mind. Peggy, can you pull that up, those pictures from that? Did I give you, get you that? No, I gave you the Dunlop's one, okay. But there's additional ten acres that has bought, been bought right there to potentially get this ash out on roads. We're gonna do two roads this year in Becker County. Highway seventy-five over by Wadena is gonna be done. We're gonna be using this ash out there. So to be determined, but it's a good reuse of that program, because that site out there is filling up. So if we can get some of that material out of there, we'll have more space, I guess. And then Barry covered the Canada cannabis property setback thing we had yesterday. That's all I had.
One thing to note on the, for environmental, that I think I saw that we're having a spring cleaning on the, on the reuse. So they're having a sale out there for the, so anyone needs any products or, I, I think they're having a spring cleaning out there. If I wasn't mistaken, I saw online somewhere that.
Are you talking about the Better Futures building?
Yeah, the, the used, used furniture out there.
I mean, that's not just a one-time thing, that's.
No, but I thought they were having a spring cleaning, a spring sale type of thing to, to try to get it moving and. I mean, I think we, I, I think I've stated, I think we, it's a great program, but I think, and I, I was thinking maybe at the end of each month or every, at every quarter, maybe you sell the lot and get it cleaned out to start, you know, so it doesn't, so we don't, and sell it to some private people to bid on it, so it's cleaned out and then you start new again. Because, you know, some of that stuff you don't want sitting there too long and filling, filling it up. Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of reuse out there and it's, it's a good program.
And then if, if you haven't gone out there, you can find some really nice stuff.
Yeah.
I don't know if the quality of the material there would.
Old, old you?
You'd want to take more time and effort to get it to someplace else. I mean, people that wanna go out there and can purchase it for a nominal fee, that's, that's great. But to dedicate resources to get it to some other.
No, I would say you, 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 you do like an auction for the lot and then they come and get it. I mean, that's, that's what I was.
To get rid of it.
To, to clean out. I mean, it wouldn't take our resource. It would say, you're, you know, we're selling the whole lot for, for a, for a vendor at, at, you know, at the flea market, say they wanna sell it over the summer or something. I, I just think every once in a while it should be cleaned out and started fresh, but.
Yeah, I agree.
Maybe, maybe annually.
If you do do that, make them take everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, oh yeah, that's glad, yes.
It has to be everything, all or none.
All right, Richard. Okay, well, I had Human Services with Erica, and I don't have nothing to add there. I had NRM with Dave. And Barry was out of town, so he didn't get to see the picnic tables, but we, we picked some picnic tables. I hope that you're, you agree with them, but.
Hopefully.
Well, we tried to get some good ones.
Yeah.
We don't want, we didn't get no, and I think, I think you would, you would want the aluminum ones. I don't know.
Aluminum ADA ones.
Yeah, and the tribe was there and they cleared, they, they have, they only, they cleared all that cutting. So all the, all the timber sales are, we don't have any problems there.
I saw they gave a nice report too. I mean, I read the, they had to say, gave a lot of information, so thanks Dusty for that information.
It was really interesting, because I didn't realize how many divisions of their land use department, I guess, they have. I mean, but then if you think about it, they're, they like do everything the state does. They're doing, they do everything the federal does, and they do everything that a county would do in, in one, in one area, so. Yeah, there's like, they had what, eleven departments, I think, in their land use.
Did you guys, do you guys get the minutes from NRM? You know, that's something that Steve could just send out to, I mean, I, I think it's very informative and send out, and send out to all commissioners the meeting minutes just for, and it could be for every committee.
Yeah.
And so that was, you know, bringing them down, NRM was a good idea. When you, when you did that, because it, our relationship has gotten a lot better with them. And. It is, and now it's different. They, like I said, no problem with all that timber sales now, so. Let's see here. Oh, and then we got, we gotta save the roost trees for the bats. And I, I think that people should be aware of this. I, I just found out last year that the bats are, are in, and they're normally in hollow trees, so that's where you would find them. And so, and, and I know we're gonna watch it for our loggers are gonna watch it, but for people cutting trees on their own property, I'm sure they're not right next to your house or anything. But in fact, they said the only ones they know about are in I taska State Park. So they don't, we don't know of any other ones, but they said also, I see that they're under bridges and in culverts and, and.
And they eat mosquitoes.
Yeah, they do eat a lot of mosquitoes, and they're very intelligent animals. I know they look kinda creepy, but.
They are a little gross.
Yeah, but. Sometimes it's not always what, you know.
Yeah, I know, but.
And I just have learned a lot about.
How many of you have had bats in your house when you were younger? I mean, we had, it was the best thing ever, my.
Watched my mom scream and yell and go hide under a blanket. It was awesome.
Well, I tore down a house for the neighbor and unfortunately, it was full of them. And what I, what we noticed was they were taking their babies, you know? We stopped and let them get out of there, but they were taking their babies with them. I don't know where they went. I felt really bad about it. But that, to me, shows some intelligence and some, something, I don't know. I don't know, unless, Dave, you got something you wanna add to that?
Just one thing on, on the, what was it, the shelter, the shelter rental and deposit. So we, they came, they came up, we came up with a price to, was a hundred dollars to rent the shelter, the new shelter. And then we decided, we didn't decide on the amount, but the original suggestion was to have a hundred dollar deposit, refundable deposit. We decided we should charge more for refundable deposits, since it was refundable, to make sure that everything is put back the way it is, not, you know, damaged and stuff like, and things like that. Then we'll also have cameras out there too, so we kind of just agree.
I don't know what, I don't know what it's gonna be, Barry, but if, if, it wouldn't hurt to have it a little higher to make sure they do clean it up when they're, somebody's responsible for it. I guess if it, if we have problems, we can make it even higher yet. I don't know what it's gonna.
Yeah, we didn't come up with a number, but. We didn't want it, we didn't want the rental of the, of the area to be too high, though. We wanted to make sure that was able to use that, but. I think that was it, was, I think. Oh, and then we didn't get, oh, the, the MPCA Climate Resilience Grant, we did not, that was the one where we would, on the bike, like, you could put stuff on the, wasn't it? The shelters, yeah, like.
Bike rack.
Bike racks and so forth. We didn't get that grant this time, but we can apply again. Yep, I think that was it. Do you have anything else at all, Richard?
No.
Okay, so I had a couple. I'll go quick. I had Sheriff with Barry, had NRM with Richard, and I also had Lakes Country Service Co-op. So really fast, basically, the Lakes Country Service Co-op is a, is an organization that helps out public organizations, but mainly they help out schools the most, but they do, do stuff for cities and counties. Well, about, in the mid-nineties, Lakes Country Service Co-op started a five-oh-one-C-three, which is a, which is a nonprofit organization. And the reason why they did that was because they needed to, they needed to be able to give services to, like, North Dakota, like mainly Fargo and some services in South Dakota. So that, that's kind of the main reason why they, they started that. Well, now they have a joint powers agreement with both state, with both areas to, to do services back and forth, so they don't need it for that. And they also were able to get some federal funding when they, when they purchased the building, current building that their, their main area, main offices are in. And they were able, if you don't have a nonprofit, they weren't eligible to apply for those or get those grants. So that's kind of the main reason why they have it. Well, right now, in the last few, number of years, it's really not, it's, it's not applicable anymore. It really isn't necessary. So what they would like to do is they would like to reorganize that. And by, by doing the reorganization, they would be able to help supplement programs for more public organizations like counties and cities mainly. And that's kind of the purpose of why they wanted to do that. So that's a, that, that's kind of a nice, that was kind of a big thing. Like, one of the things that they would do, they would do and have done in the past for, let's say, our county, is they could have a class where they could teach, they could, they could prepare our bus drivers, transit bus drivers or any bus drivers to get their CDL license or any other drivers. And it would be, it would actually be a very valuable class, would be cheap, would be cheaper than normal, and it would, it would, they would come here and do it. Instead of doing it online at the tech school where they really don't get any support, that's kind of what. We had a discussion about that long, quite a while, but anyway. So I also had a Dancing Sky meeting yesterday. And one of the biggest things in the Dancing Sky is they gave us their year-end report. And if, if, if you don't, like, like the Dancing Sky, maybe for, maybe more so for Commissioner Hanson. It's an area aging, it's an area agency on aging. It's called the AAA, and there are seven of them in the state of Minnesota. And if you're sixty or older, you qualify for services. Sorry, I'll, I'll get, I'll get there. And anyway, so there's two divisions to it. There's one division where they, where they grant money to organizations to give services to seniors. And then the other division is the senior linkage line, where seniors can call into this, to call into this phone, phone service and they can get, they can get information on what they need to do and how they need to do it. They can't, they can't tell them what to do, like, but they can give them the information so they can guide them into, and so they can make a decision on, on a lot of things. So they're very valuable services, and it, it's funded by the Aging, American Aging Act, I believe. Anyway, so they gave us their year-end report. I just wanna highlight like two things. One thing that they came out in the year-end report, they serviced in just our area, and our area goes from Kitzin County down to Pope County, Douglas and Grant County and all the way over to Menomon, Hubbard, Clearwater. I think we have twenty-one counties in our region. They served over twenty thousand older adults last year. And they, they served three-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-two delivered meals. And they also had conjugate meals, which are meals that are in-person meals. They had did over a hundred-and-twelve thousand of those. I thought those, I thought that was pretty good. I mean, there's obviously a lot of other services that they do and offer and are able to grant other organizations to offer, but that was interesting, anyway.
I think they do the sale, I can't remember what it, but it's exercise class.
Yeah, they do, yeah, 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 they do, yeah. And then.
I think Becker County has two of them.
We have two, two of those classes, yeah. And so like, for example, that was another thing. There, that's, I asked that question, like Becker County had, oh, I forget what title. Is that, is that under Title D? Am I saying that right? I'm not sure what it was. We had a high number of that. Well, like, we went up a huge amount, like, for example, went up from eleven to forty-one, and it's because of that class, eleven to forty-one people serviced, yeah.
Yeah, they started one in Lake Park.
Yep.
My ninety-six-year-old mother was.
Sweet.
I think your sister is an instructor, isn't she?
Does anybody have any further reports for the good of the order? All right, so let's go on to appointments. Is there any appointments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to apply for a position with MAGIC. It's Minnesota Association of Governments Investing in Counties. There's, it's a nine-member board. Four of them are commissioners and four of them are Minnesota Association of Auditor, Treasurers and Financial Officers. They invest the money for counties. And I would like to, it's a two-year term. They work on investing about one-point-seven billion. It's an oversight board, but that kind of interests me. I talked to Julie Ring about it, our executive director. We have regional representation from up here already. Roseau County is represented. They try to do a geographic thing, but I would apply anyway, and if I don't get it, maybe I'd, I'd apply again some other time. As far as costs, I talked to Barry about this a little bit. They do refund. It's, it's Zoom. It's four Zoom calls a year, or it's three Zoom calls and one in-person in St. Cloud, she said. And I wasn't sure about the per diem and stuff like that, but she said there was, some things are covered, some things are not.
And I was just explaining to Phil that there's lots of these state committees. Some of them pay per diem and mileage and expenses, some of them don't. But I, like I said, like I said to Phil, I applied for a position. I didn't get it, and I just wanted the board to be aware and if they would support that. Again, I, I think this is great. The more active you can be in those, I fully support. If, if, if the committee doesn't give you a per diem and, and expenses, I think the county, I would support the county doing that if the rest of the board.
I, I would support that too, yeah.
I would too.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Thank you.
All right, any other appointments? Okay, go on to the Eagle Lake Access discussion.
I just wanted to update you, or, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Dave.
I, I just wanted to update you on, on that. That's kind of my baby there. So I did go to the Frazee meeting again, and that, they said we're within ninety days of that being closed with the investment group. That is Tony Stock, Rob Flint and John Drews are the investment group. They formed a tax-free entity to purchase that, to keep it public. Meeting and, or a meeting or two ago, I wanted to insert ourselves into that, because I think it should remain public. It's gonna go through with them, and then after that, down the road, I would like us to entertain purchasing that to keep it public. Someone had mentioned, maybe the DNR would be interested in purchasing that. I did go down to Fishing Hatcheries, because I didn't know where else to go, and I, I got ahold of Nathan Olson. He was very helpful. He's the fishing guy, but he called his counterpart in Bemidji and said the DNR has no, no plans to purchase the access. But interestingly enough, Nathan said, he said, you know, we stock that over there. If we don't have a public access, the two-hundred-and-eighty pounds of fingerlings we put in there every other year will go away. So, and they do a five-year survey. Every five years, they, they catch fish to see what's in there. He said that, that would all go away if you didn't have public access, just so you know. So I asked Carrie, I, I don't know where the money for this would come. The purchase price for that is gonna be a hundred-and-ninety thousand. The, the purchase group said what, they've said to me that they would like their, their investment plus whatever fees they have involved. their investment plus whatever fees they have involved that paid back at the point if we ever inserted ourself into that. But they do want that to remain a public access, that's why they are purchasing it. So that's where it is, we'll wait for it to close, and then I, I would like to bring this back at some point, though.
I think the reason that, that they jumped in, um, I think, we had a meeting a long time ago, and the county didn't, you know, John and, I think, was it just John and I? Um, we had a meeting with the, the players, and they kind of stated that we didn't, I didn't think that the city was going to sell it, because we told them it's not a very good idea to sell public access like that. Um, because they were thinking about selling it to, you know, at that time it was still open to sell it to, uh, private, you know, private people, and anyway, they went, they moved forward with selling it and have a purchase agreement, so I, I, I feel pretty strong that, you know, that serves a big area on the east side of Detroit Lakes for, for that. Um, I think we try to keep that public, and if we have, I didn't want, you know, you hate to buy another, another a public access from another government agency, but, um, I guess our hands are, our hand is forced now if it goes to private, and they, they still want it public. I think, I think we should step in and help that, that out, and figure out how we can do that. I think we have some monies in our NRM, we might not have the full amount, but, um, I think, I think the Lake Association should have a little bit of.
Yeah, they, they don't have a lake association, that, that is another.
But I think the, the, the benefit to the people on the lake is significant too, so I think that there should be some, some of the lake.
Some buy.
Some buy-in from the lake. Um, and how that happens is, is, it remains to be seen, but I, I, I don't have any problem with us helping or figuring out how to, what type of package we can put together to, to make this happen. But I, I would like some buy-in from the lake, because, um, I think that's appropriate, you're having, you know, you have a lake access where you can launch your boat, so.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, I, I agree. I, I just don't know who lives on that lake, who could represent the lake without going to each home individually, but I, I agree with that, I think they should have some buy-in, they're the ones
Yeah.
mostly on that lake, so.
All right, any more discussion on number four? All right, let's move on to our county administrator.
Just one thing on that, is, you know, if they're, you know, they have a purchase agreement, so I think they could push the issue and, and go with that, but should we be looking at saying that, you know, we would look at that? I mean, if we're gonna add in all the other costs from closing, and I know that the investors have some money into that already.
I mean, my, my concern with doing it right now is, you know, we, we have some money in our NRM, but we're not sure that we have enough, and we're not sure what's, what's to come forward here with this budget cycle. As far as where, where are we going to get the remainder of that funding for?
I think, yeah, I think we're pretty close to having it all in, in NRM, but we'd have that, but we'd deplete that budget, but we're, we're increasing sales, so we're hoping to have more revenue coming in. Um, I think we have, um, like Richard said earlier, we have a pretty good relationship with the tribe now in, in cutting. I mean, we're, I think we're getting through that, we're getting through the process of what, you know, coordinating that, so I think the sales will continue for.
And I do believe there's fifteen timber tracts this time.
So, I mean, I, I, I think it's a project that the county needs to be in, be in, so, whether it's after the fact, and if we can get that group to work on, on lake association, or the lake to, to at least pay their expenses, and so, anyway, well, I, I think it should be something of priority for.
So we need, we need someone to talk to them about going to the Lake.
May, maybe we can find out how much we have in our NRM account, and how much, I mean, are we willing to deplete it, knowing we have the Dutton Locks?
You have that.
Huh?
Mary, we have that, I think, right now. But.
Hey, Mr. Chair, we don't need to solve this now, I'm just saying it's gonna be coming
Yep.
down the road.
So maybe we come back to the next board meeting with a plan of
Okay.
some sort, knowing what funding we have, what, so I want us to be very clear, if we're gonna use, if we're gonna purchase it, that the land, the money we're purchasing it with is specific for Parks and Rec, like, it's not something that we can use to
Yeah.
pay, you know, something else, so that.
Peggy, can you pull up some of those pictures?
One seventy-three is what we have in Natural Resource Management right now, and what about resource development? Million over million.
Phil, what do you think about the township out there? I mean, it isn't just the people that, I used to swim there when I lived out there, so I mean, I, we didn't live on the lake. Uh, we rented out there, and, and we all swam out there.
It's a definite.
It's the people in that, it's not just the people on the lake, there's a lot of people in that area, probably more people outside of the lake that are using it, it's usually really full of people who haven't been by there.
Maybe the township would like to partner with us on it.
I don't know.
And not, not in a majority stakeholder, but minority.
Yeah.
Well, and maybe we also have somehow, I mean, I know they don't have any, uh, lake association, but if you could, I don't know if this investment group live on the lake, that they could get people together and hold an informational meeting, and maybe, whether it's the RAC committee that attends, or NRM attends, that we, we start some fundraising on their part and see what they're willing to.
Well, I think Richard brought up a good point, if the town, you know, the township represents all of them. I mean, the whole lake, and if the, if the township would, maybe the township would budget a little bit over the next five years, and
or at least, and at least talk to people out there, I don't know.
Is that Burlington?
Yeah, it's Burlington.
Burlington.
Here's some of the pictures of the park there, um, it, it's a nice facility, you have some in your. That's the access right there, going down to the lake, this is on the south side. Their shelter, there's multiple shelters.
Just to the right there, yeah.
So, um, you know, I, I, I'm pretty familiar with the Burlington Township people, uh, wha- wha- what would be the request to reach out and, and ask what, or say what?
Maybe go.
Are we talking about a financial?
Interested in.
I would say yes.
Financially?
I mean, maybe it's the township financial support, rather than the lake being, there's no lake association support.
All right. Uh, Carrie, do you want, can I be directed to work on that since I know the players there, or?
Yes, we can do it jointly.
The, the fund that has a million dollars, what restrictions, what is that restricted to? Okay. Seeing if we can access that fund, then we would have easily the funds available.
It's a, you would have to monitor, a lot of tree monitoring in there.
Okay.
Mary's the most observant person we have here. All right, let's move on to the county administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Um, there's a joint governance meeting coming up, I would have sent you out an invite, it's hosted at the Chamber, and that is coming up April, April Fools or April first at seven. Um, the Board of Equalization, the request for the date for, from our assessor was the June sixteenth. That's actually, I, as, after it was set, I was told that historically, I think he'd done him on a board day, or a board evening, and this happens to be a Monday, he wanted to do it the first day that there was availability for him, so hopefully that will work out. Um, we've been tracking the Becker Bay Auction, which is kind of exciting, that opened yesterday, so if you're, um, able to bid or look at those items, if you have interest, we were, Peggy's been tracking it beside me. Thirteen sixty-eight, and just opened yesterday, so, um, as a reminder to the public, that, that money that's raised, all the items have been donated by staff and commissioners, and all that money is donated back to the local food pantry.
And there's a lot of items this year.
There is a lot of items this year.
I was, years before, I feel like there's way more.
And the goal is the year, twenty twenty-five.
Yep, and I think, well, the way we're kind of cruising through here, hopefully we'll exceed that this year, so. Um, I did do a little bit of, well, actually quite a bit of research, I know last board meeting, there was a lot of question with regards to consent agendas, and how we're utilizing them here in our county, and whether or not we should be placing resolutions on those consent agendas, so I did reach out to several other counties. Um, for the most part, it all kind of really came back to, um, the criteria that you put on routine business on there. There's no, um, hard and fast rules that you can't use resolutions, I did find a few counties that do, uh, put some resolutions on there, so we're really back to, and really probably what I learned is our county utilizes resolutions probably more so than other counties. And I think that's just historically how we've operated, perhaps for tracking and being able to go back and find things, so. Is there any questions about that, or does that answer everybody's question? There's going to be a meeting coming up, I believe it's this Friday, um, we're starting the application process and the screening process for that childcare grant that, um, we were awarded, uh, for a hundred and twenty thousand. So we're putting together a screening process with the committee as far as, uh, what that, how we're going to score potential applicants for, this is for those daycares with the, um, with the plan for them to increase their slots. So we're putting together, I know Cody had gotten some information, he's put together the members that could serve on that committee to, um, put together an application process, and then that will go out to, uh, Becker County as far as childcare providers that are currently providing, or perhaps ones that might want to come on board, and maybe there's, um, some financial assistance that they could utilize in order to accomplish that, so that is coming. Um, I was in the city of Frazee, introduced myself with Commissioner Hanson, so that was, uh, that was fun. Um, I am planning, and I've talked about this before, and again, I just wanted to go back, um, we have talked about doing as a board a road tour to go out to Dutton Locks, and I had a few things on this list, but I just wanted, I'm thinking that we're probably gonna want to look at maybe May, when the weather's a little bit nicer. So perhaps the first or the second board meeting, I guess it doesn't really matter to me, we could certainly do it back-to-back following a board meeting, or if your preference, depending on how much time we think we're gonna take, we could certainly schedule it on an off day too. I don't know what people's preference is.
It's either one.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Depends on, what, depends on the agenda, I mean.
Well, I'm getting to that, the, yep, well, and a couple of the items that we, that have come, um, come into play, the Dutton Locks project with the new shelter, um, the Eagle Lake Access, I know you have asked for that, um, to view that, as well as, um, we had previously been invited, and whether or not we want to do this or not, it's entirely up to you. The Strata, the gravel operation out there, they had talked about wanting board members to see what that operation looks like as well. So those are three potentials, and I don't know if there's others.
The Strata one would worry me a little bit, I mean, that would be a very, if they're, if they're coming behind that with a request for expansion or something, it would be very sensitive, I think, to, to go out there as a board.
Okay.
Because there, I mean, when they, when they applied for, uh, expansion on the, I mean, it was highly controversial, so I mean, we want to make sure that we don't appear that we're doing something inappropriate, so I, I would, I would not be wanting to go out to Strata.
Okay, and that's why I raised the question, yes.
So.
Okay. All right.
But the other, the other place that, and I think individually we go out there, or, is do, um, Buck's Mills, because I, see where the project, where they're going with that project, because that's, that's something down the road that I think, um, the county can expand, that is a park area right on that, because it's a very scenic, it should, with that rapids coming in, it'd be a very nice viewing area, and we have property out there, so.
Okay. So that's three, do you have something?
No, Mr. Chair, I just, uh, I'd like to give you a little more clear direction on when you want to do it. Would we like to do it after a, a meeting, like this meeting, and then just leave?
If we did it, if we go to Dutton Locks, Buck's Mills, I think we should go to Buck's Mills, because I, I like that idea, we could, and Eagle Lake, that might take a while.
I don't, I mean, it's gonna take
Three, uh, three hours.
Hour and a half.
You think so?
Yeah, well, I mean, we're not, what are you gonna do?
Well, that's true, we're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go have lunch out there or anything, or go fish, yeah, that's.
I would just do it right after.
Yeah, we do that for.
After a board meeting.
In May.
In May, yeah, so either the.
April or May.
You know, and.
I don't mind any.
You could do it before a board meeting.
And something that, you know, we used to do all the time was to go to, was to have lunch, and I think maybe that would be a day we could, um, go as a board and, and, and have a, a lunch after the board meeting. We used to that, we used to do it after every meeting, we'd go out for lunch with all the department heads. Um, it was a bonding, uh, it got you closer to, I mean, I, I think it had its benefits, and the lunch was paid for by the commissioners or whoever, we had a rotation, it was not paid for by the county, the commissioners paid for it, and then department heads, we rotated all around, everyone took.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
I said, or by the administrator.
Oh, no wonder I didn't hear you.
Administrator took their turn also, but every department head could choose where they wanted to go, though not every time would be at the sandbar, but.
I was gonna say, I know restaurants.
Unless we got real deep discounts, I mean, it was left up to whoever was buying where we went, but I think this would be one, it may be.
An opportunity.
Just the board wants.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Stop at, even on site and have a sandwich, if it's nice, so it something to consider, depending upon weather too, it's like.
Right, I'll try to pick a nice day.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, continuing on, um, just wanted to give you a quick update on the Veterans Service Office. Um, our Veterans Service Officer, his last day was last Friday, and I just really, um, want the board to appreciate the work that he put in, and the prep that he did, and he did some flyers for veterans, while we don't have anybody in that office currently, so that was very well done. Um, he put together flyers, so for veterans that they could, if they are coming in, and we don't have anybody on site, at least they have, we have some information that we can provide to them as to in the interim where we can, where, where they can go, you know, to receive certain services. So, yeah, he just did a really bang-up job, so. Um, that are, we're going to be starting, um, those interviews, I can't remember if it's next week or the week after.
Tues, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Next week, yeah.
Okay, Tuesday, we had a lot of really strong applicants, so we'll be doing several days of interviews on the first round.
Carrie, who sits in on those interviews?
Um, the first round will be.
You can.
No, I'm just wondering.
Well, we've talked about that. Um, it's several days, so the first round, it'll be the HR Director, myself, and then I also have pulled in the Veterans Service Officer from Clay County. So we'll get through those first round interviews, and then I'm just anticipating that we'll probably have a second round. So, and then at that point, I would probably ask for a commissioner to also, maybe a department head, uh, second round.
Phil, Dave and I, if you're interested in doing the first round, you're welcome, Dave and I had commitments, so three days.
They're, they're not, they're not necessarily short.
So, yes, I.
Sorry I asked.
Yeah.
No, but seriously, if you want.
If you want to, yeah.
When the time comes.
Okay, yeah, so, yes, so we have several days scheduled, and, uh, so we'll be moving forward with that. Um, I just wanted to bring to your attention, I thought this was, uh, I, I believe, I don't know if it was in the DL, like, anyway, um, The Time Magazine had featured the Trolls as, uh, best places in the world for twenty twenty-five to visit, it was white, quite, uh, the kudos to, you know, the trolls, so. Um, yeah, I don't think, I don't know if we've, this area's ever seen anything like that, so it was, uh, just.
We did get voted once on.
Beach.
The beach.
Oh, did we?
Back in the eighties, before my time.
That was, that wasn't in the Times.
It was not in the Times.
Yeah, so.
Some men's magazine. Maybe it was GQ or something.
But I, I just, you know, not, not just nationally recognized, but worldwide, so, yeah, it was, it was, I thought it was interesting article that went out, so.
I think that other one referenced Sheriff Glander during his date.
The beach?
Top ten sites, Sheriff Glander?
Well, it's also on National Lampoon's Vacation, remember that? There's a postcard on there.
There is?
Yeah, there is.
With Chevy Chase, yeah, the first one where they go.
We're going down, we're going down memory lane.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we were talking, I know this came to mind after I listened to some of your reports, we were talking about, you know, emergency response and nine-one-one calls a while back, and I don't know that I ever shared this with the board, but, um, I did have departments, and I think we have one left in this building, actually, and Joan from nine-one-one, um, was also on the, on the receiving end, so I had our departments and, and all the phone extensions in the courthouse call into nine-one to see where they'd register, and they all, just about all of them, except for a handful, were, were correct, so that was, uh, good to see. Um, because I, I can't remember how that all started, but one was registering on the wrong floor or something, and it was accidentally hit, and they didn't know it was coming from, so. Yeah, and I think our conference room one is wrong, but, um, but anyway, that, I just wanted to let you know that we were looking at that, and that's perhaps something we should even do with all of our other county buildings, just to make sure that if somebody is calling and needing assistance, that it, you can find the location, you know, especially if they're calling from a landline.
Yep.
Um, just a couple of legislative updates, I have been on, um, calls a couple times a week, and as you can imagine, as some of you probably have experienced as well, it's, it's fast and furious, so I'm just gonna hit a few high points. The pad, the paid family leave, I just learned, I think it was on Friday, that there were some amendments offered to that by Representative Baker, um, to exempt certain groups, uh, from counties, specifically that are covered under a CBA. I don't know that that's going to stand, but they also were putting in, if you recall, um, the cost of this, there's never really been anything put in about who pays for it, and that perhaps could be a negotiated item down the road. But, um, the amendment that was put in would define that as a fifty-fifty split between employer and employee.
So this is the one, though, that we were told, counties were exempt, could be exempt, wasn't it, from one of the? wasn't it, from one of the legislators?
Yes, but then I found out that's not.
That's not accurate?
That we were talking two different languages, exempt meaning you could go to a private company to administer this versus.
We already have it in place.
Yeah, yeah, so, I was talking exempt, and actually AMC has asked for our information, because I think Becker County is very unique in what we offer as far as sick leave bank and vacation bank, and we also, as you recall, a few years back, did a catastrophic leave bank, which we do have money in there available, especially to those new employees that perhaps haven't accumulated the time, if they had some type of a catastrophic illness for them or their family, so they wanted me to, and I'm going to get all that data together for AMC, just so they have an example of that, so I will be pushing that out. Also, in these, this ninety, or, excuse me, this amendment, they were talking about the paid family leave defining more of the definitions of family and who it covers, when it covers, some timelines, above 50 employees below, how much time people could take off paid under this, again, those amendments, I believe, were just heard, are offered last week, so we'll, we'll basically see where it goes, I guess. E S, E S S T, they're in sick and safe leave time as well, there were some amendments offered on that for, if you recall, there was the ability for employees, if the weather was, there was a bad weather event, that they could use their sick leave bank for those weather events, but it didn't have any exemptions or exclusions for essential employees, such as our plow dryer drivers, or our 911 operators, or deputies, and those kinds of things, so the amendment that was put in here would allow for some of those specific essential exemptions for those essential employees, so again, were you going to say something? Oh, sorry. The other thing that I came across in one of these calls, that there is, and I, I believe this story probably broke through the Star Tribune, there are some compacts that are being negotiated between, kind of in private, between the Walz administration and tribal entities, where it would give tribes off reservation, some basically foothold, if you will, in the, in the marijuana market, under that draft compact, and, and there was a draft kind of floating out there, tribal cannabis businesses can, that are operating off, off reservation or off treaty land that's been defined previously, are able to negotiate that and be exempted from basically the rules of the states with regards to the zoning, the taxation, and all of those kinds of things, so.
I did read that article that you sent me, Carrie, and it did say that it was wrongly reported first, that the tribes would not have to pay sales tax on it, and they updated it that that was wrong.
Okay.
That they would have to, but I don't know what that looks like, I'm, I think there was, it was going to be negotiated, but they would still have to pay.
The sales tax.
The sales tax, yep.
Okay, thank you.
But that's still a negotiation, so it's not done, hell is done.
Correct, correct, yes.
Can you make that a little clearer, so they could come down here?
There's some, there's some negotiations in the works between the administration and tribal entities off reservation.
So they're, they're negotiating for us?
They're negotiating.
The state is?
No.
They're negotiating.
Well, kind of.
Kind of, yeah.
I wish they wouldn't do that.
Yeah, I do too.
What?
Kind of, yeah.
Do we have any say over that?
Well, we just learned of it, I.
No, we don't.
Okay.
We don't have say over it. The state, but the state is so far behind in what their rule, I mean, they're making up the rules now.
As they go.
As we go.
I mean, we could lobby for what we want, but.
Well, I don't think they got any business here letting somebody else in here.
But, but we are allowing everyone to sell, so.
And that's fine, but they gotta, they come through us here.
They should come through our.
Yes.
They follow our rules.
Right, that's, that, they should not be able.
Because we were looking at what fees, if we can charge fees for that, too, for retail, just like we do for alcohol, tobacco.
Yep.
Well, I think fees and registration, I think we need to look at that.
But the other thing is, the other question, I think, for, to do with tribal is, being that it's sold in, within the county, do we get that money back to the county, or does it all go to the tribe? So, you know, there's a, there's a significant payment to the counties from cannabis sales, but if it's tribal, does the county get any of that?
Yeah.
Money back? If it's all sales tax, then they probably would.
Uh huh, yeah, so that brings to light, kind of, you know, with the business, if it's operating off the, off reservation lands or treaty lands, you know, who actually benefits from that, and, and do the counties and locals benefit from that? That's really the question of the day.
I think we're going to need an attorney.
We've got an attorney.
Well, then we're going to need to talk to him.
Also, on these legislative calls, the, the age-old question, which there's no answer for, and, and the question keeps being asked, whether or not there's going to be a bonding bill this session or not, I have not heard anything, and the last item that I have is the Spring Township Officer Meeting is, let's see, March 27th, in the jury room, it's at 6:30.
Six thirty, better write that down.
It's, it's, six thirty is when it starts, but it's actually seven, seven o'clock when the meeting starts.
Seven o'clock when the meeting starts.
Meet and greet is probably at six thirty.
Six thirty registrating.
Is it seven thirty?
Seven.
Seven.
There was, I, I've received an email, and, and yesterday's conference with MRC, everyone, most counties have received an email from the NPR asking about rentals, have you, has anyone else received that here?
Uh huh.
Maybe.
I haven't.
Maybe you want to.
The short-term rentals, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, they asked about, I'm working on a story about rental license in Minnesota, trying to create a list of counties that inspect rental properties for cities as in rental inspection department perform routine inspections, and a list of counties to do that, so there was a lot of counties that, or every county had received that same email, and they were just wondering if, if anyone's responding, so.
Do you want to forward that to me?
Sure.
Okay. So, that's all I have, unless there's questions for me.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The Township Meeting, do we have to post that? If, I was planning on going, Eric, I think it was, Dave.
I, I would normally go, but I'd be, I'm going to be.
We would normally post it, yes.
Okay.
We'd post it, though.
Yeah, okay, it's already posted.
Yep.
That was, that's one of them.
And Eric is going to report.
Their annual, twice-a-year meeting.
Yeah. Anything else, Carrie?
Nothing.
All right, so let's move, move on to the two polled consent agenda items.
Mr. Chair, why don't we do, I would.
Why don't we do Brian first?
We do the.
Yeah.
DOC.
Yeah, okay, you're right, let's do, let's do probation first, so go ahead, Brian.
Barry, when we left the lunch bunch last time, it was supposed to be you the next time.
Was it? Well, I'll start.
That's probably why we quit.
Exactly.
The lunch bunch.
I certainly will start.
That's what it was called.
I will certainly start that, again, I, I think it was a good.
That's awesome, skipping out on pain all the time.
I did, oh yeah, no, no treats this morning, no.
Brian, would you bring another chair up and bring that young lady up, too?
Right, absolutely, come on, Aaron. Provided you guys a copy of our PowerPoint presentation, just so you don't have to refer to the board, or to the monitor, but first of all, thanks for having us today, we were here.
Mr. Chair, could, could you introduce everybody at the table, I haven't.
Yeah, just, Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, it's nice to meet you, Brian Rubenstein, District Supervisor, Minnesota Department of Corrections.
And, and call, talk, you got to say your other business.
Yeah, Doug Call Extraordinaire.
I do have to get one also.
Hi, I'm Wade Erickson, I'm a Corrections Programming Director for the Detroit Lakes District.
Aaron Rundle, and I'm the juvenile agent for Becker County.
Thank you.
And we also have Nick Camel with us. He doesn't talk loud. And then we have Jennifer Stubber with us, and she is our traditional agent along with domestic violence programming, so, yeah. All right, so in front of us today, we were here last year talking about some of the cost savings that had occurred for Becker County, one of the thing was specific to, we equated some of the savings to our juvenile residential placement costs, and I think last year, it came up to approximately about eighty or ninety thousand dollars that, not necessarily just us, but with some of the practices, and we're hopeful that some of the things that we were doing kind of took some of those expenses down year over year, and so we're going to get to that just in a little bit here, but that's kind of the purpose why we're going to be here today. In all honesty, we wanted to come before you today just to kind of give you a message of, despite that the state budget is really scary right now, these are some of the services that we offer from the state of Minnesota, and even though our paychecks come from the Minnesota Department of Corrections, we are here as your local interest for all things corrections, okay? One of the things that comes with having our delivery system, how we have it here, is all of our felony side is a hundred percent paid for by the state, and so when we get towards the, the end of our slides here, we'll talk about some of the in-kind costs and some of our service and equipment costs that come along at no charge to the county as well, okay? So I'll explain that for you, Mr. Hanson, as we go through this as well, so. One of the pieces that we had started last year was a very robust strategic goal plan, so you'll notice here that I've got some things that are highlighted as well that pertains to some of the costs. This last year, we started our domestic violence program, this is compliant with the statutory 26-week mandate that all of our clients who are sentenced under the domestic violence court conditions have to complete per statute. One of the things that I'll get into in a second here on the next slide is the importance of this, is we were having a backlog of our clients that weren't able to get into program before, when it was held outside of our office, and so we took that in-house to do that at no cost to the client, and it's turned out to be a really, really good tool and benefit to our program. The next piece is our Decision Points Program, Cognitive Behavioral Intervention Group. This is another piece that we didn't have in play, that really gets at those thoughts, those actions, the behaviors, and how clients can do things differently to ultimately change their behavior, so that's something that we have in place now as well. And then we just started pre-trial supervision, and I believe most of you guys were here when we announced that, that started on November 1st, this is at no cost to the county or the client, and we're going to have some data for you at the six-month mark. The other piece that we have in play is our Assistant Tribal Probation Officer Program, where White Earth, excuse me, I'm just have a little cold, where White Earth has hired three assistant probation officers under their umbrella that work with us, with our Native American community, for those folks that are on supervision on a high and medium risk, so as to provide more support for some trauma elements, some cultural pieces, and all things that are wrapped into what we do with our Native American population. The other piece is our continued residential placement savings from juvenile supervision practices, you just heard me talk about that as to why we're here again, we're looking like, and this is another slide down the row here, close to a hundred thousand dollar savings this last year. Treatment court continues to stay in progress, and that's at no cost to the county as well for our staff side. Our case plan roadmap and our implementation as to what we are doing with our clients in regards to changing behavior and the good practices that we're putting in from our agent to our client, that are really measured successes with our client moving forward. So specific data, on the next page, you'll notice that we have the domestic violence program that we started. Over the course of this past year, in order for our agents to qualify to be an instructor for this course, they had to complete an extensive forty-eight hours of training, we started this back last April, the cost to our clients is zero, we've got several groups going on per week, and with a, both an in-person and virtual option, so if in case there's any travel issues, et cetera, that's all negated for our clients to attend. Most importantly, the timeline of a group can be at a minimum of eighteen weeks for our clients, the ages are anywhere from eighteen to seventy-one, seventeen of our surveys came back with an overall survey score of four point nine out of five, being that the clients truly enjoyed going through the treatment and or programming, they appreciated the agent's stance as to how they worked with them, et cetera, and overall, our completion rate so far is twenty-five out of thirty-two, so it's actually doing quite well for the population that we serve.
How do you measure this success rate, the twenty-five out of thirty-two?
That they're not being discharged from the program early, that they've completed the whole twenty-six-week program, so sometimes there's violations that come up, or they're just not compliant in the group, so we've only had seven that have not been able to make it. So, the next page, under juvenile supervision, this is why Aaron's with us today, you'll notice that for all of last year, we spent approximately eighty thousand dollars, and we had a budget of a hundred and ninety-one thousand. I'm not sitting here saying that every single thing that we're doing is tied to a hundred and ten thousand dollar savings, but what I am saying is that we are greatly assisting with that, with the expertise that Aaron does bring to the caseload, Barry looks at her, and so it's that good work that we do, that we try to do, and keep these folks out of institutional-based programming at every chance that we can, it's an absolute last resort that we actually put somebody in placement, and Aaron is the king of many, many chances to, to keep the successful folks in the community with us, so. The next piece.
Kudos to you, Aaron.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The next piece I have, and that's an exciting savings to see again, now that's the second year, the next piece is our pre-trial, like we said, pre-trial started on November 1st, and we're going to come back to you in May and let you know how that first round is going, it's been, it's been going very, very well, minimal impact on the jail, we have hardly, I think we've put, I think we've had one or two violations so far, but that's the data that we're going to bring back come May.
And I, I think those, you know, that pre-trial, isn't that, is, wasn't there some worry at the jail about the re, the continual?
Yep.
The revolving door on that?
Yes.
You're saying it's, it's, it's been better than, than thought, or?
Yeah, much better than we thought, yep.
And then negative outcome that we're hoping not to have, so.
Correct, I think the worry was, is if we just have people in the community on pre-trial, we're avoiding them going into jail in the first place, but yet now we're going to have a violation, and then they're going to come into jail, get back in, back out, it's, we're not seeing that, so that's, that's been a positive. And on the flip side, again, the savings, when I don't have people in jail under violation, et cetera, that saves the county per diems of everyday rates of, of what our clients will consume, all the expenses, that kind of stuff. The next piece here is a infographic in regards to what we're doing with our case plan while we're working with our clients, and we know that it's totally hard to read on here, something that we'll bring back in May, just to kind of give you a blip as to what we do with our clients, working with them through the four-step process, which is our engagement, which is our review process, which is where we evoke and conduct an intervention with our client, and then ultimately assigning homework with our client as well between one visit to the next. You have an A process step on here, this, any client could take upwards of their entire supervision time, or they could complete supervision and maybe even earn an early discharge if folks go through our roadmap successfully, through all the tools that we use on a daily basis with our clients, so we're excited to show you that come, come May. In-kind services, so here's where we get to the sensitivities about, you know, where the state budget's at right now, et cetera, and how our county is set up really, really nicely to have all correctional services at a bare minimum cost to the county directly, okay? The things that we do under the Department of Corrections in collaboration with Becker County, we have our Human Resources Department, FMLA, performance, all those things that come into it, on our felony side and our gross misdemeanor side with our three agents that are under the other six, and then our support staff, we took all that on, okay? Financial services with, is with us, all the training, all the IT equipment, everything that comes along with what the agent does, legal affairs, our staff support, our planning and performance unit, our research, luckily enough, when we have a county that chooses our delivery system as what is in Becker, our clients are able to receive some housing, additional housing supports from the county, from our state directly, to pay for emergency housing, that's, those funds aren't available to a county that's within a CCA County, Community Corrections Act, or a CPO County, so we're pretty proud of that, in case our clients have an emergency, we're not coming to the county or any other referral source. source for that quick stay. The other piece is our safety administrator. And another big one that we have on the back here is, as no cost, to Becker County on the next one. So as you remember, we've moved our gross misdemeanor misdemeanor juvenile agents over to our felony, felony office down in Washington, where that has negated the costs of having our staff here in the courthouse, which creates more of a budget issue. So that has freed up that space up there as well. We provide all of our vehicles, all the IT equipment, office supplies, travel and expenses, the database licensing, all the furniture, drug testing supplies, and we do that also in kind with our gross misdemeanor and misdemeanor staff to chip in with that as well. The body armor that agents can request, all felony agent costs, everything related to that. That's where the biggest expenses come in for our supervision is on the felony side. So on, you'll also notice 50% of our gross misdemeanor agents, misdemeanor agents, so that would be Jody, Aaron, and Nick. What we have here in Becker County currently is you, you see 50%. The way the budget landed this last time through all the subsidies and formulas being reran, where Becker County is actually only paying about 45%, okay? So we got about a 55% back for Becker County. Some counties are, they don't have anything that comes back, and it's basically on the per capita rate that some of our numbers draw in for funding within each county, so we're sitting very well. The district supervisor, that is 100, 100% paid for, and any other disability accommodations, et cetera. So in short, we just wanted to provide a real detailed, quick explanation as to how we humbly feel that you guys are selecting the best service for Becker County. And I know I do have a corny saying at the end here, serving the community of Becker County is an honor and a privilege, and we mean that. It's not just in writing. We're very glad to be able to do this for you all with the hard work that we do. And just know whether or not our paycheck comes from the state of Minnesota, we're so embedded locally that we do feel like, you know, obviously, we're part of the Becker County community and working with the Sheriff's Department, Social Services, you know, even on our opioid settlement grant committees and with Commissioner Jepsen, et cetera. It's all those things that we do together with you guys. So we wanted to say, first of all, thank you for continuing and allowing us to just kind of give you an excerpt of how it is that we do try to assist the funding savings in Becker County.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
I know, I know, I don't know if I can speak for everybody here, but I know I, we greatly appreciate your guys' work. It's awesome.
Yes, we do.
Yeah.
The people make the difference.
Yeah.
You have, thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I, I'd say Wade and Brian have been at sheriff's meetings, I mean, so we're partnering there. I think that's important to keep those communications open. But again, to reiterate what the board said, I, I think if every, every county had the works, the, the staff that, that we have in Becker County, they probably wouldn't be looking at the other options. And Phil probably doesn't completely understand the process. There are, there's other options that we have this service, we could do it ourselves, and there are counties that are looking at it. And I've looked into this, 20 years ago, I looked into what, what services and found out right away that, that what we get in Becker County is, I don't know if it's the same product, but we, we get our money's worth from, from what we do and, and more, so.
I can say too that I was at the legislative conference for, and, and I'm on the Public Safety Committee, and I bragged about you guys, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was just talking to a few people, and I said, I told them how great our, our, our relationship was and how everything goes well, and you guys do a great job.
That means a lot.
I think it is the people.
Yeah.
I mean, if you could maybe upgrade Aaron a little bit, otherwise, I mean.
You have every chance on Wednesday to do that, Barry.
Aaron and I are friends, so we, we know each other.
I'm sorry.
But with that, you know, she is one too that.
I'm sorry.
That will answer a call regardless of time or date, and, and that's what, that's what I think makes this such a positive relate, well, not positive for us, but that's what, that's what, your budget items, that's what, that's what helps bottom line is the relationships that you have with your clients and how, how you can address those immediately. And I mean, I'm sure there's, there's people out there that wouldn't take a call or won't, won't do that, and, you know, I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, but the success rate will greatly depend on, on taking that call or not, so.
And I probably, I probably said this last year too, when we talked about it, but no, the kids, the kids that you serve need a person.
Yeah.
And, and that, that person is often what makes them successful, so kudos. And thank you for being there, person.
And I think another thing, and, and maybe, maybe not just locally, but the state has reduced, I think, paperwork from when my wife was an agent, the paperwork at that time, she said, I can't do this job anymore. It's just all paperwork, and that's not what I want. So I think the state has streamlined maybe a little bit to make that, that agent contact is what is so important for, for getting that relationship going, so.
I think if she saw what we do right now, she'd be pretty thrilled, and maybe she'll even come back someday.
Who knows?
But it's a complete different change from when we were with her then.
Yeah.
Versus now, so.
So, but thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Absolutely, and we will, we will continue to bring you data at least once a year, but especially in regards to our pretrial and stuff, where we wanted to do that a little bit more from the beginning. We're going to do that and bring that back in May to give you some really detailed information, so.
And highlighting our domestic violence program that we have now has really been a big thing with Nick and Jennifer. Starting that programming, Nick really being instrumental and being administrator to that programming, and when they completed their 48, 48 hours of training, to be able to bring that to the county here, to bring that cost-free to our justice-involved folks, to be able to have it operating what these folks are doing, non-traditional hours too, so it doesn't interfere with work, which compounds the difficulty with people that are justice-involved. This is another example of the hard work these guys are doing to try to make things better here.
Mr. Chair, I mean, just a quick comment. If I could reach out to you, I have a couple of ideas for your early release.
Yeah.
Program.
Absolutely.
That have been.
Yeah.
My brain that I'd like to share with you.
And that's a good point, Carrie, because here, here's what you'll hear sometimes is, and I get a little sensitive with this, is some groups across the state say, well, you don't have local control. You guys have local control. We collaborate with you. If Carrie brings us an idea, we're going to try every single way to incorporate that idea, and that's how we do it with local control, much like our opioid efforts and all of our domestic efforts, et cetera, et cetera. You know, and even like our release planner that was put in the jail, you know, us shifting that position over to help Todd, all those things like that are super easy to work with us on, where we will absolutely do our best to incorporate whatever the county wants incorporated. So very much appreciate your time, and yeah, let's, let's meet up with them.
Okay.
Yeah, well, thanks, Brian, Wade, Aaron, Nick, and Jennifer. I did it them all.
And Nick.
Nick, I forgive all Nick, dang it. Sorry, Nick.
Thank you all.
Did I say Nick, didn't I?
Yeah.
Yeah, see, Peggy, Peggy backed me up on that one.
Mr. Chair, Carrie, would you schedule some time? Would you schedule some, give me their information, so I, I don't have a clue what just happened?
I'll, I'll help, yeah.
We, we're going to move on. We're going to take those two consent and gen items and put them after human services? Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if we could, if Judge Lawson is here, and I'm guessing she probably just needs to be here for the oath, the.
Yes, so let's move on to human services, please. And then we'll come back to Mary, too.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We have, first item is the, are the opioid RFP recommendations. We have, we are on RFP round two. We have had a number of applications that the review team scored, and we're bringing to you the recommendations for what we'd like to move forward with. There are three projects for round two that we'd like to recommend. The first is the Becker County Public Health application. The category is in prevention for a recommended funding amount of $36,400. This is to continue with the work that's already being done with the first round of RFP. The difference is that we've moved to nasal naloxone rather than the injection. Otherwise, that's basically the same, providing naloxone trainings at least quarterly and upon request, providing community outreach and education and funding media campaigns in addition to the naloxone access point. The second is the Becker County Human Services Behavioral Health Unit in the category of treatment for $20,000, and this is to expand the availability of treatment for opioid use disorder for clients who are unable to afford the $1,000 down payment, which is the majority of what this is, this particular project is for, and to provide a small amount of wraparound services to individuals. And lastly, the F5 project, which is in the category of treatment, the recommended funding amount is $216,500, and the project is to establish a support system for criminal justice-involved individuals who have OUD and co-occurring substance use disorder, mental health. In collaboration with probation and parole, they're funding, it's funding two peer support specialists to move into Becker County and provide wraparound services. This particular project has been in effect in the Fargo-Moorhead area for years and has been very successful, so we're excited to hopefully bring this into Becker County for a total of $272,900 out of the opioid settlement funds.
Is there any timeline to spend those funds? I mean, I think we have 627 now. There's, I mean, there's not a, I mean, I know it's ongoing revenue for quite a few years.
No, there's no timeline, correct.
I just wanted to make note that the F5 project is a pretty big deal to, to come to Becker County, so I think us being able to help bring that to Becker County is, is great, so I'm, I'm excited for that, to, to help those that are, you know, have, suffer with opioid use and other co-occurring substance use and mental health disorder, so.
Can you, do you want to explain what the F5 group is a little bit more? Just, is there a, is it a?
They currently work with, it's the treatment programs, the drug courts correctly in FM, in the Fargo-Moorhead area?
They do a number of things. They, I think they have a housing for those that have federal charges and help them find housing. There's a number of things they do.
Do you want me to speak to them?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, Carrie's very familiar. In my former life, I dealt with them quite a bit. They started out very small, and it's really, it was started by a gentleman that his history is quite interesting. He has a long criminal history, previously drug addicted, et cetera, or alcohol, I think was his, he's very open about that. He gives speeches. So he really was trying to look at the gaps for people within the community, and they started with mentorship, so they pulled people together that got sober, they're mentors to some of these individuals that are addicted because, you know, really, people that are addicted really want to be connected with people that have been there, done that. So it started there. He also opened up some safe, or probably sober houses is probably the better way. So I, I don't know how many they own in Fargo now, but basically that is a home where people can go while they're in treatment, they have to follow their program, they have to be on probation. I know that they do some work in the jails. I know they have done some groups. They're very connected to the Sheriff's Department in Cass County in Fargo, as well as the Human Service Department, and did really, really good work when I was in Human Services over there.
Was he the gentleman that was an article about, that he got his, that he was, the felonies that he had were?
Quashed, yes.
Because?
Yes. They also do some work, and I know he's been, he's a strong advocate. I know he's done many speaking engagements. I know he has also testified out at the North Dakota Legislature on just the barriers of, you know, felons and trying to get on the right track, and then they have this history, and then they can't get rental places because of their history. I know he's worked with landlords, et cetera, so he's.
I read that story about him on, when he.
Correct, yes, and just his history is just, and again, he's very open about his history, where he's, where he came from and how he got where he's at today.
Mr. Chair, if I could add just one thing to that. So we are fortunate enough that we're going to be hosting F5 within our office, and that's where they're going to take up residence for a little while to meet with our clientele and really get enmeshed with our folks that are on supervision. And so they're going, we're going to have an office for them in kind so that they can have a good start and really hit the ground running. We were super, super pumped to be able to work with them moving forward as well, so thanks for, for seeing that.
Awesome. Do we have any further, any other questions for Denise or anybody else? We need to have a resolution to approve the opioid spending, so.
Do we need a resolution?
Or not a resolution, a motion, I'm sorry, I used the wrong word.
I'll make a motion to approve the Becker County opioid settlement project recommendations.
So we have a motion by Erica, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Richard.
Mr. Chair, just in the motion, then we'd list the names of the agencies and the amount.
Yeah, is that, is that good with both?
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Do all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Discussion.
Or do you want, do you want?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just, Denise, can you give me a, a top level, this opioid settlement, how long's it been around for? Or when did we get it?
Two years now.
How much was it to begin with?
That's difficult to, because it's more complicated than that. There are a number.
There's several of them.
It is, yeah, it's the opioid settlements, and so whenever there's a settlement, initially it was pharmacies and things like that, and when they settle, then that, they all kind of pool in the same pot, and the state sends the funds over, and then we're responsible at.
Does it have to be used for certain things?
For, yeah, there's an MOU that describes.
The categories it has to fit in?
Categories, yeah.
So this is just one of those categories?
Treatment, prevention, or other, yeah.
Treatment, prevention.
Becker County joined the state in these class action lawsuits against the big pharmaceuticals and doctors and pharmacies that pushed the opioids on patients. They were settled, so this big class action got the funds and they distributed, it's going to be, it's a 20-year payment? Is it 20?
Summer 20, summer 30, it just depends on the settlement.
Depends on the settlement.
Each settlement is different, so.
Pharmaceutical.
That's why it's so complicated, and there's always more adding up.
So there would be more, this isn't an end date? This is, this is just the beginning?
This is our second round.
This is our second round.
Yeah, and currently we have $627,000 in that budget, and it will, it's paid semi-annually for the next, depending upon which lawsuit was.
Again, each settlement is different, summer annually, yep.
20, 30 years, so.
So it could be at least a minimum of 18 more years.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries.
It was funny when this, when the opioid settlement came, because there was people saying, wow, we're not going to get anything out of it, why bother? So I think there were counties that just didn't do anything, and now they're finding out that there was, it's big money, so. It was billions of dollar settlements.
All right, Denise.
All right, and then next we have the Fraud Prevention Investigator position. We'd like to move it from part-time to full-time, and the reason, the main reasons for this is due to the caseload of this individual position and the fact that the state fraud prevention grant allowed us full-time funding beginning July 1st, so we wouldn't put anybody in that position until July 1st at least full-time. One thing that was interesting is that we had, for the first full fiscal year, we had a fraud prevention savings as a result of this position of $211,296 and about $8,000 in criminal overpayments. So that's at a part-time status. As a full-time, of course, that would just continue to increase. This position, part-time, was funded almost all by the state fraud prevention grant and some reimbursements, but at that time, the county share was $6,466, with this change to full-time and the full-time grant, that amount, that county share amount will turn to zero. We're happy to report with the grant dollars, additional grant dollars and reimbursements. I don't know what other questions you have. I have Shannon Jamelka with me, our financial and income maintenance supervisor, who supervises directly this position and this program.
I think I asked this question yesterday in finance, the grant is good for, for sure for two years, so the till through '27?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
What step did you budget 26 on?
Step five.
Step five, okay. The only, the only concern I have is in our, in our meeting yesterday with MRC, that in the government, in the governor's proposal, he was cutting funding for fraud prevention. Now, I don't know what areas, but I have a concern if that, if that funding is cut. Now, I don't know what areas, but I have a concern if that, if that funding is cut, that the county, I mean, I just have a concern. I mean, I think if we wait till July 1st, we'll find that out, if, if it's two-year cycle, but, you know, you don't want to hire someone and then go, try to go back to part-time because then we are liable for probably some unemployment and.
That's interesting because the information that we have received was just the opposite, that fraud prevention, they were increasing funding through fraud prevention programs.
Right, we asked that question.
Well, Representative Schultz just yesterday said the governor was, is, and that's because he's on the fraud, I think he was on the fraud committee now, that he was trying to reduce funding for fraud. So I mean, that was, and I don't know what areas, but that would be concern. I mean, but again, if that's not, if it's, if it's funding and you have that.
We would know by July 1st.
Yeah, we have that. The, the budget is, should be done at the state before that.
Correct.
And maybe he was, you know, maybe it's not this fraud funding, maybe it's some, it's another, because it wasn't specific to what he was saying, but it's just like, oh, this cuts to counties is killing us. It's just.
For sure.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Denise.
Yes.
Sorry for the elementary questions, but did you say that, is that the fraud investigator part-time found $200,000 of fraud? Is that in our county?
That's correct.
I don't know whether to feel good about that or bad about that.
A lot of it too is through the savings. So fraud prevention, we go out and we can stop it before it gets too high. So a lot of this comes in with cases we are closing, maybe a month into it, we found out that something wasn't factual on an application. So we are going to close the case for the next available month, and therefore we save that one month in savings for whatever program that would be. So we do a lot of investigating on the front side also to make sure that the people who have applied and are on the programs are eligible to continue to use those services going forward. If not, when we close them, then that would be a savings too.
So is this fraud, is this outright theft? Or is this people not knowing how to apply the program?
It can be both. We have done three criminal cases in the last five years. Prior to that, it was well before my time if we had ever done them. So we look at intent, we look at all the pieces, we investigate the whole thing. It could be somebody entered some information they thought was the correct way to do it, but found out it wasn't. So what we would look at is, okay, well, you didn't have the intent to commit fraud, so that would fall under savings because we're going to shut you down for the next available month because you're not eligible. There are intentional fraud. There are people who put information in knowing that it's not true, and we'll find that also.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chair, the money, the savings and the monies are mostly state or federal monies. I mean, it's not county dollars that they're saving, so that, so if the county has to pay for the fraud prevent person, I mean, if the funding went away, we'd be paying money to save the state money. We would be paying money to save it. So it would, it'd be a difficult, a difficult, challenging for us to spend our money to, I mean, it's the right thing to save the state money because it's still our money, but it's, there's no return on it, so. That's why you have a question. Yes, Peggy?
Do we have any more questions for Denise at all? So I would entertain a motion.
So I will make a motion to approve, to change the part-time fraud prevention investigator to full-time starting July 1st, 2025, pending the continued prevention.
Securing the grant.
Securing the grant.
Second.
And then we have a sec, most by Erica, second by Barry. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Did you want to discuss that civil rights assurance agreement?
Do you want to just give a overview of it just real quick?
Okay, yep.
So some of our programs require us to, our clients to provide us with federal tax information, and so there are certain items that we have to have in place and a prescribed procedures for that. Thank you again. Some of those things are, we have a sign-in procedure for those areas where that, you know, that may be seen and it may be on their screens. For example, we have to have certain security measures, certain IT things we need to be have in place, so we work with IT on that portion of it. But this particular document just. Staff with the annual training that's required, which we do, and each one of them sign off that they have taken it annually.
And this is basically for the Food and Nutrition Act?
Yeah, correct.
Yep.
And I imagine there's, every act probably has another agreement like this, so. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Denise, I told you, any of those dates, I think, would work for me for bidding.
Yep, you bet. Okay, I'll get back to you, let you know which one.
All right, we, we will take a five-minute break. When we resume, we'll start with Mary on the other treasure.
Turn to your seats.
I like that intercom thing, that's okay.
Yeah.
No, no, they don't have the resources. So that's where I'm thinking about what are we going to do to help get it cleaned up and not finish them? Like unless we, unless we help them.
All right, Mary, you are up on the contestants' role.
What is your bid?
I'm going down.
I miss Bob.
Yep, good morning, commissioners.
Morning, Mary.
We are here to talk about Resolution 325-2A, the 2025 tax forfeited land sale. The resolution itself, you will classify the land as non-conservation and set the initial prices. We'll approve the date of the sale as being May 2 at 11:00 a.m. The second document I gave you is setting the terms of the sales, which basically aligns the procedures that we will use that day. Something new due to legislation is in the middle of the page. All not land sold, all land not sold at initial sale will be offered after 30 days for a minimum bid. The third page is the 14 parcels that we are proposing to sell. We have four adjacent parcels, which must be adjoined to a parcel that they're being restricted to only adjoining owners. We have eight public parcels in townships and two public parcels in the cities. Once the board approves this, they would be published in the newspaper 30 days prior to the sale and posted on the county website. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, my question is, now, I know we had tribal input on this. Were they going to purchase any? Do you know if they were purchasing it? Or how, what's the process for the tribe now if they want to purchase?
They come, they come to the sale.
Oh, they come to the sale?
They come to the sale. They bring a blank check.
And then, Mary, can you also explain how the, just briefly, how the process works now with the tax forfeited sale, where the money goes to?
Okay, with the new law, 75% of the proceeds after the initial cost will go to the state for the fund to, for any claims that are filed against previous properties that have forfeited. And the money used to stay with the state and would be distributed. We paid for the foresters and then we would distribute it between the townships and the county.
The 25% left?
Yep.
So what the 75% is, is, goes into a super fund.
Yep.
So if the counties get sued by entities that claim that we have taken their property, I mean, wrongfully sold their property, made a profit, which we did by state law, so.
No, new, new state law.
The old state law, we were following state law previously, which now they found unconstitutional, so now we would have to be, we have to follow the new state.
Mr. Chair, Mary, how did these 12 parcels come up? I hear we have all kinds of tax forfeited land in the county. Why are you choosing these?
Because the new settlement that we agreed in with this class action lawsuit said we had to list first the properties that forfeited between 2016 and 2023 that had not already been sold. So that is what this group is.
The new law only does, I think, a 15-year look back.
Yep.
So the old, old tax forfeit land, it's, it'll apply to if we sell it. I think if we sell it, it'll follow the new formula for revenues, but it doesn't, the, doesn't apply to them being mandated to be sold. These are mandated to have to sell.
Yep.
Yep.
Because of the look back period in the settlement agreement that we signed.
What about forfeited properties previous to 16?
Right now, we're getting, we're actually getting PILT payment on that. And if we sell those, 75% of the value would go to the state and we would lose our PILT payment. So we're not pursuing looking back at something that we forfeited 40 years ago because we're managing that as forest land.
And when we, and when we sold it in the past, it was for a specific reason. I mean, like, it was landlocked and there, and nobody could have access to it unless it was an adjoining landowner. And I think the county felt in those parcels that, you know, beings, it's, it's not being, no one can get to it. We can't log it because we'd have to go. So then, those are the ones that we would look at in the past selling. Now, in this new, new process and new formula, I don't see a reason why we'd look at selling, you know, anything unless it was, you know, extreme circumstance. Then we'd review and sell it if we chose to.
Yep.
Mary, do you anticipate this, like, this process, like, next year we'll do this process again?
Every other year.
Every other?
We usually do it every other year. Because we have the elections in even years, land sales in odd years.
Okay. Where does the 25% of the funds, do they go into the county general fund?
Tax forfeited fund, natural resources. And then it's divided up between those two funds, resource development and the Parks and Recreation Fund. That's where their funding is coming. And also from the timber sales, which you'll hear about in a minute.
Thank you.
I would hope that the state, I mean, after, after we get through a few years and this, and there's, the lawsuits are paid, if there has any lawsuits are paid, that this formula would change back so the counties can capture some more of this revenue to enhance our recreation.
Yep.
You would hope.
It will take a while.
Hopefully, yep.
So, no, for, any further more questions for Mary? All right, I would entertain a resolution, a pass resolution 2A, or a motion to pass resolution 2A.
So moved.
So a motion, or by Erica, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Barry. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. All right, let's go to, let's go real quick to number seven, the Highway Resolution 2D that we pulled from the consent agenda.
Yes, so my question on that was, up here. It's a, it's a resolution to stop the parking of West Lake Drive on the north side. It was my understanding that the construction is not going to start until next year. Why are we stopping the parking on the north side now? I assume this resolution would take effect as soon as we enact it, right? Or as soon as we vote on it?
I would assume that it would, and maybe we can get Jim, if he's online, to tell us. I would say it would start when construction started.
That's what I believe.
Well, the planning stages this year, right? We learned that in our meeting. And next year is when they're going to start. Why would we do this now? That's, that's the question. Unless it is direly urgent, I would suggest that we can answer from Jim on that. Maybe it's a very good reason, but there's no sense in stopping the parking.
Well, we could leave it open-ended and leave it up to committee to set the date on when.
We could do that, yeah.
I mean, it does say approval of the proposed construction is conditioned upon parking, certain parking restrictions.
Says she'll ban the parking of Mortiveiros on the west side of County 8 Highway 22 to Legion to Washington.
Just say date to be determined.
Well, that's, there's no date in there.
Just say date to be determined by.
By highway committee.
By, just say our highway engineer.
Yep.
Very okay with that.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we have a clear, so we, it's, so it's clear that it's not current.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, if it needs to be current, if there's something that needs to be then.
Yep.
But maybe.
Yeah, I understood it, that he brought it forward, that specifically it was going to be when construction began.
But it doesn't say that in there.
Right.
Okay, got it, okay.
Yeah.
If you could clarify that, can we, well.
We can, we can approve it with the county engineer picking, selecting the date.
To clarify the date.
Clarify the date.
The date as either construction or as, or as recommended by the county engineer.
Mm-hmm. That it's not going to start tomorrow.
Yep.
In this scenario.
Correct. So do we have a motion to approve 2D with the?
I'll make that motion with the.
Okay. Motion by Barry, we have a second.
Start date and put it in there.
Okay.
Erica, second?
And I think it should probably just read, just, he should insert the date in there. And we're, I think we're fine with the date.
Anticipated construction date, probably.
And it could, you know, that could be whatever, you know. But I think it should be a solid, I don't think we should leave it kind of open-ended in the resolution because it has to go to the state for CASA road. And maybe, again, there was some CASA language in there to say about when it has to be reported for CASA miles to get reimbursed for those miles. So I don't know if there's some timing on that either.
Okay.
Okay.
Any, any, any further discussion on the resolution? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, all right, motion carries. Okay, let's move on to information technology.
Mr. Chair, were we going to use, we were going to move item eight?
Item eight is.
You moved that to the end?
Yep, to the end, yep.
Okay, all right.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Chairman. I have today the normal computer order for the county for 2025. It's a little different this year in that this year, Human Services has a grant called the MA Enrollment Allocation Grant that's going to be able to pay for 30 of the 56, 51 laptops that we're purchasing. So that would be $39,720. So then the county is responsible for $30,879. We've also added in there 15 docking stations. Our docking stations are getting older, and so we, we need to replace the ones that are called USB docking stations and moving to USBC docking stations. And there's 15 of them for sure out there. So that's what this is for. So we would be getting some funding from a grant, which is, which we haven't done before in the IT department for this. And then the other would come from the normal.
Recorder.
Recorder's fund.
Fund, yep.
Any questions?
And then one other thing, too, by Duke, by the grant, which is a great, which is awesome, it reduces the amount of money that we take from the recorder funds.
Yep, by 40, almost $40,000.
Almost $40,000. Do we have any questions for Judy?
I don't.
So I will entertain a motion to approve the purchase of the laptops, the docking stations, for the amounts of $75.99.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, so any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, I'm just wondering if it might be helpful for Judy just to give the board an update on our voicemail system that's down?
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Sure. Okay, the voicemail, it's called Viewmail. The voicemail system needs to be upgraded to a current version. We are on 12.5. We need to move to 15.2. We've been working with the vendor, once we got ahold of the vendor, we've been working with the vendor for the last few days, and we are planning to do that tonight, starting at 4:30. There's a couple of issues with doing it that will impact us a little bit. One, and that will impact us no matter when we do it. That's why we're choosing to do it after hours. The voicemails that people are going to get between 4:30 and about, between 8 and 9 tonight, they will be lost forever. They will never, ever be heard. Because we're on an old system, we've pulled the data off the old system to put on the new system, and so they're just going to be gone forever. Also, at about eight, between the 8 and 9 o'clock hour, we will lose our auto attendant, which is when you call in and you can go to here and there, and you don't ever have to talk to anybody till about 1:00 in the morning. We're hoping to be done between 12:31 this morning with, with all, with everything, including the testing. If it does not go well, the good news for us, and this is why we're willing to take this, this risk, is we have the ability to, it's, it's what's called a side-by-side upgrade, where we have a piece of hardware here and a piece of hardware here. And so we still have everything over here, so if we have to power this one back up, that's what we will do if we run into a problem. Otherwise, we'll be using the new one by the time everybody gets in in the morning. Any questions on that? Oh, and what caused the Viewmail issue is it wasn't the, the voicemail system or the, it wasn't the voicemail system. It was actually something that, that, that Microsoft did, which said, even though we're using what's called, I know nobody cares, but Auth2, it just doesn't work. With the version we're in, there's something about it that just doesn't work. So it was kind of a surprise to us and a bit of a surprise to our vendor at the same time, so. Any questions on that?
Mr. Chair, Judy, is that for all of our county services? Is that just the courthouse?
The whole county, we use these, except for 911. But it's for the whole county. It's the voicemail for the whole county. It's not the phone system for the whole county, because those are on different servers. So it's all the voicemail for the whole county.
So if I may, you can still get voicemail, you just have to dial into your phone.
Yeah.
And county employees are used to getting a message on their computer email saying you have a voicemail from this number, this person. That's the piece that we're missing. So people can still get their voicemails, but they just have to dial into the phone.
Yeah, sorry, I should have explained what the issue was, I'm sorry.
I honestly, truly, before you emailed us, I didn't know that existed, so.
Any other questions on that? We'll let you know how it goes.
All right, thanks, Judy.
Thank you, Judy.
All right, Steve and Mitch for land use and NRM.
Is this closing the show up?
Yep.
Yeah, they're the last.
Morning, Mr. Chair, board members, Carrie, Peggy. We have a number of items before us today. Let's put on a list. For Parks and Rec, we have Resolution 0325-2C, supporting commitment to the Detroit Lakes to develop and implement a recreational facility improvements at DMRA in Mountain View. This is part of their plan to expand the facility. Basically, it's just reaffirming that we're going to continue to work with them, support them. Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
No.
Motion approved 2C.
Second.
All right, we have most, Barry, second by Phil, do we have any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, motion carries.
Thank you. The second item is a trail routing study, RFP, in a contractual agreement through the Partnership for Health. They had some extra funding available that we were able to get a grant from them to do a trail study going from Detroit Lakes or the Dunlocks Park going down south where the future Heartland Trail would go. We're looking at $15,000 from them, and then if the study becomes more than that, we'd look at cost sharing that between, hopefully between city, county, township, and wefest if possible, if they'll kick in some dollars. Any questions?
Steve, what, or Mr. Chair, Steve, what is the top level of the study? What is the top dollar amount?
You know, I talked to the consultant, and we were anticipating it's going to probably be in the low 20s to mid 20s is where it would wind up.
Let's make sure that somebody keeps an eye on that, that that doesn't get up to 50 grand or something. Because I think Lakeview Township, they wanted to know, I think they would be involved, not at a huge level, but, you know, that they would like to get involved and know what's going on, I believe, with a few dollars, but not out-of-control dollars.
Correct.
I think, Steve, what do you earmark, or what do you think the township, 1,500 or something?
1,500.
They want to know what the total amount was, what the study did, and we still haven't got that yet. We got to do the study to figure out what the routing.
So what we'll do, the next step would be, once this is approved and we can move forward, then we'll release an RFP and then we'll get those numbers. And so we would know at that point. But we'll do that, we'll have that discussion with the vendors that we're going to be sending this RFP to, to get some better ballpark ideas where we would be.
Steve, did you say that, that the study will look at going through, like Shoreham or maybe along Highway 59 and down to Bucksmills also? It'll examine more than one option?
It would be. It'd be looking at possibly three different routes, down 22, down 59, or look at a possible alternative to go west from Dunlocks, maybe around Sally, somewhere in there.
Okay. I just want to make one point, too. Peggy had emailed us, this was a draft resolution, right, Peggy? And then you emailed us the?
I emailed you the actual.
The actual one, okay. Okay. So.
It came in what, Friday?
Friday, I think, yeah. Yeah, yep. So just so you know, that's what we're approving, the actual one, did probably the same. All right, do we have a motion to accept? I'm lost here right now, hold on. It's a resolu, res, do we have a motion? 2C, do we have a motion to accept resolu?
We already did 2C.
No, not 2C.
It's B.
It's two.
Parks and Rec, A, we did, it's B.
I don't know if we have a.
Just a board motion.
Just a board, do we need a motion to approve the trail routing RF, to send out the RFP for the contractual agreement?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Erica, second by Phil, do we have any further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
In regards to this, do you want us just to route this back through committee as we get a commitment from the different, you know, as this moves along and we pull it all together? Do you want this routed through committee and the committee members report back? Or do you want this to come back to the board?
The RFP?
Well, no, just a summary of where we're at on it, once we put it all together.
I would say if it's a huge, a large, more, larger dollar amount than you think, then yeah. But if it's 25 more, I think you guys could bring it to committee.
I always, I always think, I mean, unless they're time-sensitive, I always, I always like board discussion. I mean, that's, that's me. I always like it.
I think it would be good to come back to board.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
No, and, and, Mr. Chair, also, you know, this is going to benefit the city. I think the city might take an active role in this, too, along with Lakeview Township, all the entities that are bringing this together. Think a financial component would be appropriate from all of them.
Okay.
If we do get.
So then you could.
I'm saying ask.
Yep, no, we will.
Then you could bring it to committee, after, maybe after you talk to those entities.
Get a final number.
And then bring it to board.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, motion carries.
The last item with Parks and Rec was the purchase of picnic tables that was on the consent agenda. I guess what's, you have some questions then?
So, so we're going back to item eight, the land and use the picnic table purchase on the consent agenda?
Yep.
Is that what we're doing right now?
That's a word, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I was finding it.
So, two things here. So I'm on the RAC, the Recreation Advisory Committee, but two things. NRM discussed this, the RAC discussed this. This leads into a bigger picture. This is the strategic planning. One of the first things I think we should do with strategic planning is look at our organizational charts for everything. Because in our RAC committee, we went ahead with a little something. We thought it would be good and appropriate and save the county money if we asked organizations around the community if they would be willing to donate to these picnic tables. So we've already started that process. I don't know if that was, I don't know if that was even appropriate or not, but we did. We thought that'd be a good idea in the community to get the Roters and Coanuses and Lions with, and they're, and we've done that already. They are very, they want to be part of that. I guess I don't know if I overstepped my bounds there on that, but the bigger picture is, is that who's making the decision here? Is NRM, is the RAC committee? I'm, I'm looking for a little structure there so we know who answers to who and who does what. And it seems like this was some redundancy and definitely some duplication on this half.
The board is who answers.
Yeah, we.
Ultimately, the board, neither, the RAC is a recommendation committee and NRM is a recommendations to the board, too. So the both, either one should come to the board. I don't know, I don't know. I think in, for today's motion, I think we authorized to purchase these and fundraising to have naming, or to have naming rights for each table for, you know, if you want to put a Lions logo on it, or a, you know, sponsored by the Lions, or sponsored, I mean, that name, then if they want to reimburse, or pay for or reimburse, I think is a great idea.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, so we've already, we've already got commitments from organizations. So I know there was a six-week lead time on these or something like that, so with how the process works, we would direct that here today, go out and buy them, and then reimburse them from these organizations and have their name or plaque put up or something?
We're going to have to buy them regardless of where the money comes from.
Yeah.
So we'll order them. The money comes in, I think there could be, I will have a plaque for all donors for everything, and maybe, maybe it'd be one plaque saying, you know, this is what the donation was for the picnic, this picnic, you know, picnic table donation, or flagpole donation, or, you know, some shelter donation, or whatever the.
Okay.
And maybe RAC or NRM could come up with naming rights. If you want to name the, name the whole facility, the, you know, American Legion, you know, there should be some financial obligation then, initially, not ongoing, but just like the school, everything at the school when it's built, if you want, or the museum, you want a room named after you, this is the dollar amount. And maybe that's, maybe we need to look into it a little bit more.
And all donations that come to the county, such as for a picnic table, have to come in front of the board for us to accept.
Yes.
So, I mean, that would be, and once we have all that, the names and the dollar amount, we would bring it, whether it's Mitch or Steve or somebody from the RAC committee, whoever wants to come in front of the board and say, here's, here's what's been donated, here's who, here's how much, and then we motion to accept that donation.
And then as, as far as the, the two committees, I think there is some overlap, but I think there's a purpose for both. The RAC committee is, obviously is all geared towards recreation and then Parks and Rec. And then the NRM committee does some of that, and they also do all the natural resource management stuff. So I think I, there's just, there's going to be overlap because of the nature of the two.
Well, there is over, Mr. Chair, there is overlap. I just, I've been on that RAC committee for two years, and, and I get confused at times at what our mission is. I agree with you, Barry, we are, we're a recommendation committee. I agree with you, this, getting funds all has to come before the board. But I don't think it's clear who does what. And I know the, I mean, I'm frustrated on the RAC, we don't have a budget to do anything. We're a recommendation committee. Well, we spent a lot of time doing some stuff, and then it has to go up to NRM, then it has to come to the board, and, I mean, at any point, it can be shut down.
Well, there are things, I think, I don't know if RAC can, you know, we kind of modeled it after the Planning and Zoning Committee. Planning and zoning doesn't have a budget to, you know, it's kind of that same format when it originated. They were looking at, groups were coming in to ask for guidance on projects. That's kind of what the RAC was intended for, so I don't, I think if you're expending money, I think then it has to go through NRM. But it was a recommendation for this trail, you know, horseback riders want to put a trail through some tax forfeit land, you know, RAC was the, where you go to, to get that process through. I mean, that was the intent. I guess, I don't know, we can examine that, too, and alter how, what, what is the purpose of, of the RAC committee? But that's what the original, because we had ATV trail, you know, a lot of ATV requests and a lot of, but then you started getting hiking, you know, we had the hiking trails. And so that's where, there was actually a trail looking at going through the Smoky Hills, and I think Guy Fisher did a lot of work on finding the route through there, because he had, it was a state trail, so it had to be, you know, certain slopes weren't allowed and, but that, that was where that was going through. And again, I, I don't know, it's evolving somewhat and, and I guess I don't have a good answer right now.
Well, I would hope that our strategic planner, if we do hear back from him, that we could, we could vet some of this out a little bit behind the scenes and then come with a, a clearer vision, if we do get to that point. So that's just, just a small thing.
You know, like the perch, if the, the purchase of the park over in Burlington Township, you know, would be one that, you know, do they have, do you have a recommendation? Does the group have a recommendation? But they have to have, you know, if it's county funds doing it, you know, it's a whole different story. Because they would have to analyze, is the funding available? Is the funding, is, are we cutting it too close for what, you know, ongoing? Or, you know, we have ongoing expenses, so, I mean, you know...
You know, you're bringing a, another constraint, financial, which everything is financial. So, I mean, strategic planning and a budget, put that together, I mean, that's, that's your answer. And that what, that's what needs to come before this board here. But the subboards, the subcommittees, I, being on the rack, I just don't think there's a lot of clear direction on what are, yeah, we got a lot of good ideas, but how do we get them implemented? You know what, this is kind of a conversation for another day. I just, I kind of wanted to vet that a little bit now, anyway. But I don't know if there is an answer.
So what is the, what, what, and maybe Steve or Mitch, are we soliciting for donations for these at the county?
Not from the county standpoint. The county is not asking, going out and asking for donations. I, we kind of talked about at the RAC committee that RAC members were interested in, and this would help alleviate the costs on the, the county, which...
The board members, the members on the RAC, myself included, and a couple other ones are asking, the Lions Clubs and the...
Can we, can, can the, should the, I don't know, whom, the RAC committee, through, through Mitch and Steve, kind of get a letter then drafted for, for the RAC committee to do this? And, and if anyone else wants to have it on, maybe put, post it online? If you want to make a donation for a park, a park bench, a park picnic table? You know, you have different levels of donation to be made at that, or...
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, I, I think that the picture is much bigger than that. Like, for that specific thing, that might be okay, but I think the picture is, is bigger. How do we go about, if something like this comes up in the future, how do we address it? I think that's the question that needs to be answered, rather than just a specific item.
Well, this was, that I was getting at, you're going to have many different levels of the park bench versus the picnic table versus naming the whole shelter, or, I, I mean, for the, for Dunlocks. I mean, that's just one, one area that we're talking about, not countywide parks, but...
But I think if you, if you're talking about the RAC committee in general, you know, that really, I mean, it is a recommendation committee. So I don't know that there is going to be anything that would just be a decision made by the RAC committee. Is that, is that kind of where...
The, the problem I have with RAC committee going out for donations to buy, I mean, if, if you're just giving cash donation, do what you want, but if you, I mean, I think that's all you're asking right now? That you're, you're asking for cash donations without any recognition? Is that, if you, but if you start asking for recognition, it's got to be certain levels. I mean, if the Lions or whatever group wanted to be recognized as a donor, then it has to come through the board. I mean, I think we have to acknowledge that, and at what level will we acknowledge or allow someone to put their name on some sort of item, or...
You know, Mr. Chair, I, Mr. Nelson, Commissioner Nelson, what's the difference between the RAC committee sitting around a table for a couple hours and discussing, and you going out the door and talking to somebody on the street? I mean, there's not much more, except that it says we're on a RAC committee and we have a mission. I mean, someone could make a recommendation on the street to you as you leave today, to any of us. That's, I mean, that's...
They, they could, but if we are, if, if any donations that are going to be accepted, officially accepted the board, our board has to approve those donations.
Right, I think, I think what you're getting at is, we should, the RAC committee's recommendations should, maybe we should have them on, listed on the board agenda and have a report.
Yeah, that's...
Every, at, after every RAC committee, we should have a report what their recommendations are, what they're, you know, rather than, and that comes straight, you know, Steve and Mitch present that, or probably Steve coming from the RAC committee, and if their recommendations, they, but if there's no one asking for anything, maybe it's just, I don't know how we format that. So, I mean, I think, I've always struggled with the RAC committee myself. I, I've never, I've never been a strong supporter of having it, because I think, I think it was so redundant, it wasn't necessary, if you want to have people at NRM. But we have good members on the RAC committee, so I, you know, we have to find a purpose, is what we have to find.
Well, when you look at chain of command right now, RAC committee, they're bypassing NRM to come and report here. So, I mean, that's a structural thing, correct? I don't know how it works. I don't know how it has to work, but I think it can work better, and I don't think it's working as efficiently as it could right now. We don't have to solve it today.
No.
You know, just being aware, maybe as a start.
I don't think the RAC committee's ever been used, utilized well. Because, I don't know, that's my opinion.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the purchase of the picnic tables? Sorry, my glasses got dirty. Purchase of the picnic tables and, I guess, just purchase of the picnic tables?
I'll, I'll make that motion to purchase the ADA compliant picnic tables for the new Dunlocks Shelter.
Second.
With a, is it okay with both of you, with a maximum of 11,500? Is that good for both of you? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion?
I think it's prudent, though, to acknowledge that there are people out there willing to donate funds to make this improvement, and, and if we get those funds, we'll recognize them at a later date.
Yeah. Do we need that in the motion, though?
No.
No, okay, yeah. All right, so all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, Steve and Mitch.
Next item is for NRM, it's the spring 2025 timber auction tracks that we have listed for sale.
Yeah, yep, there's a, on this auction, 449 acres offered with 9,270 cords of an appraised value of 151,140 dollars. As it was talked about earlier and alluded to, the TPO or Tribal Historic Preservation Officer, the interim officer has reviewed all 15 tracks and approved them, as well as the State Historic Preservation Office. So, from the state side of things. One of those tracks is, they noted that it has to be frozen ground only, so we put that on the appraisal, on the permit, so...
And then, again, thanks, thank, a big shout out to the tribe for coming to our meetings and working through these early on, and that's been a, I mean, it's been something that we've been missing, and it can, it's, it's better, we have such a good relationship with them. The people that, you know, that are coming are great, they are great to work with.
They are, they're really good people, I agree.
Yeah, they are. All right, so do we have a motion to approve the spring 2025 timber auction tracks?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion by Barry, second by Richard, all in, or do we have any further discussion?
Mitch, so compared to previous years, are you about equal to what you've done in the past? Are you growing in timber tracks or acres, or however you measure that?
We have, yep. We, so for a long time, there was just one field forester basically putting up all the, the wood for each auction. So we're essentially doubling, or doubling that. So I guess if you look at the acres per auction, this is, this one's 450. Historic auctions might add 250 acres or 200.
What's your vision of two foresters? What can you do a year?
This is probably...
Is this your max, or can you get...
It could go up, I, and you know, want to look at it, not from just us going out just harvesting because, but looking at what we have out there for age classes and, and the composition of our forest, and when it needs to be harvested. There will be an influx in five to 10 years, when we're seeing a lot of older aspen coming up for, in that rotation age, we call it. So looking into the future, I expect us to do more harvesting, and more acres, so. But that's a little ways out yet. I think there's still a lot of wood out there that we haven't touched that has either converted to other species, or we're trying to go in there early enough so we can grab like the, the early age species that might fall out. So your aspen, your paper birch, those type of species that are more successional or pioneer versus your oaks or maples that are long-lived species that can stay out in the landscape and don't need to be harvested necessarily, so...
So, and all the environmental concerns with replantings and the bats and all that, all those are being met before we even get to this stage, correct?
Yeah, yep, and then every timber cellar gets set up, we're required to follow what we call Forest Management Guidelines, where it's set by the state. They're voluntarily, but each state or government agency is, follow the, or is supposed to follow those. So that's everything from retention trees, so we're reserving a percentage of the cut area or riparian management zones, we're not getting too close to the water's edge. A lot of erosion control factors get put into that. Those are just some examples of things staff are required to meet for each sale, so. Along with communication with DNR and the tribe and so forth, so...
And I know we've put a lot of money and effort into the, the trail routing system, which the loggers are using now, but the snowmobilers and the, the other recreational people use in the off-season, that's all working together?
Yeah, and we've talked about it for a while, trying to beef up those roads. They've been neglected for a while, I think, or they just, it doesn't take much, you know, one season, a wet season, and four-wheelers and side-by-sides can really do some damage. So that's another thing coming forth is that grant and aid, ATV trails. I think that's a way for us, not only us from the county, but other folks to help monitor that, so we're avoiding those environmental impacts on those trails and spending less money. Once we get them up to the current state they should be in, so...
Thank you, Mitch.
Do we have any...
Mr. Chair, just asking, what do you think the current rate of timber is? Is it, are we higher for the sales of the wood?
It's about normal. It's, we're a little bit, if anything, we're a little less, because our transportation, our trucking to get to the mills, the big mills, is a little farther. We're out here a little ways, so, you know, our price per cord for aspen might not get as high as Itasca or St. Louis because of mills in the backyard, so the loggers are going to pay a little more to consumers, so.
The big, the big mills.
Right, yeah, but there's a fair amount. It's surprising, you go in the countryside and there's a lot of Amish mills that are taking wood. I wish there was more plants that did like poultry bedding and stuff like that, so we could utilize more species that are tough to sell. Or, for example, basswood is, it's a tricky one for us to, or the loggers to, to get rid of or utilize, so. And in fact, in the back of the day, Long Prairie had a poultry or bedding mill there, which was very good for that, utilizing that species specifically, so...
Do you have any further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second, so all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, next item.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, the next item is an agreement with DNR. This has been in the works for some time and worked and talks through committee, but it's called a bat habitat conservation plan. The intent of this is to protect those incidental takes of northern long-eared bat, Indiana bat, this tricolored bat, lots of different bat species that are federally protected, because there's a white nose syndrome disease that's out there, if you're familiar with that. To what, we just don't want to abruptly kick the, the young bats out or the bats during the winter or summer seasons. So this agreement through the DNR, not only Becker County would help, but eleven other land county, or county land departments protect us from, if there was an incidental take of a, of a bat out there in a known area. So it doesn't change any of our management goals or objectives as far as acres or how we manage the forest. It's simply, it's, it's almost like insurance or something like you might call it, that, that helps, you know, the state's working with the federal government so we can get houses underneath this plan. Otherwise, yeah, if there's any other questions on that, I'm not a expert on the disease or the white nose syndrome, but I know this is, this is something we can do to help prevent the loss of more bats, so, especially in the roost trees.
It's really, I mean, we are required to do, do this anyway, I mean, we can't do this.
If we didn't go through the state, we'd have to go through, follow the federal, which is the same thing.
Yeah.
It's a little more flexible here, so...
So do we have a motion to approve the landowner enrollment program for the bat habitat?
We, is there, I mean, the only question I, is there an out that we can get out of this? If, say, the state changes the rules in this, or, or, or is stricter than what the federal government requirements are?
Yeah, that was, Commissioner Nelson, that was discussed a little bit at, like, with other land commissioners and with thing, all these things changing with environmental restrictions kind of being reduced on things and, or lessened. Yeah, I guess we'd follow the federal, whatever the federal guidance or rules are, and I'm sure the state would follow that, so.
But is there...
Is there a way for us?
Is there a way to get out of this agreement if we...
It's a good question.
Well, it would be a new agreement, wouldn't it?
What's that?
It would be, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Nelson, wouldn't it be a new agreement if, if they changed it? We wouldn't, they can't just change an agreement that we agreed to and sign. If they want to change it, they have to ask us for a change, don't they?
I don't know.
I guess I don't know the answer to that. I would think so, but maybe not.
I'd like to do that. I'd like to make agreements and then change them as I go and make you live up to your end.
Well, if, if you're, it depends on how it's worded.
Well, they would be rewording, wouldn't they?
No, it depends on how the agreement is.
If, if the agreement is saying that you will follow what our guidelines are...
Oh, and the guidelines change?
And the guidelines change. That's how the state agencies change law, they do it by, they don't need legislation, they change the law, so. I mean, I can, I'm, I'm supportive as long as we have an out, but I would like, I would like to, if we make, if we approve this, to have the county attorney review it so we know that there's a, we're not binding ourselves to something that we, we shouldn't, you know, that might have long-term effects that we, we're not aware of, that's...
Mr. Chair, Mitch, what if we don't sign this?
Then we're not, I guess then we wouldn't be following underneath some sort of a, a coverage. We would be, since that, we're going to have to be following federal, federal rules, which are a little bit more stringent, and they don't allow, I don't think, for the incidental take of the bat species.
So, so the, if the law, if the machine, piece of machinery runs into the tree, knocks over and kills the bats, we'd be liable for that? Now, under this agreement, we would not.
So, under this agreement, yes, under this agreement, we're going to be, they haven't given a number, but they will be allowed a certain amount of incidental take, so.
I mean, again, I, I'm fine with it as long as, if we have county, county attorney review.
Yeah, we do that.
And we've done that numerous times, so...
So do we have a motion to approve the agreement with the county's attorney's review of the, of the agreement?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the DNR landowner enrollment program with county attorney review of the, just to make sure that it's not, has some unintended circumstances.
So do we have a, we have a motion by Barry, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Richard. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries. Any other...
Just, just a point, that if the county attorney raises a red flag on something, then it, then it comes back here for more discussion.
Yep. Any further, anything else for the good of the order? All right, we are adjourned. Have a good day.